Good evening Vacaville, this is the regularly scheduled December 9th, 2025 City Council meeting at 6:00 PM. May I have a roll call?
Council Agency Authority Member Stockton.
Here.
Richie.
Here.
Silva.
Here.
Fremont.
Here.
Wiley.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Chapman.
Here.
Mayor Chair Cartley.
Here. And if you are able, please rise for a moment of silence. Councilmember Stockton, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, ready, begin. I am a United Nations, civil rights, and the United States of America, and choose to be a fellow, which is safe. Why should, under God, individual, the liberty of justice, or wrong?
So we, before we started this portion of the meeting, we went into closed session at 5:00 o'clock. There were two items that are on this agenda. There was nobody in the audience to comment. Item 1B was continued into a date in January that has not yet been scheduled. There is nothing to report out on the item that we discussed, which was 1A. Any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mayor. So the item 11A, the public hearing, has been rescheduled for January 13th.
All right, and that would have been our, our public hearing.
Yes, and then the item 12E, the best item, has been moved to the front of the agenda, so it will be heard as the first item on, on the list of the business items.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
I think it makes, we'll have a shorter night, and we'll also be more attentive to those in the audience who are likely here to discuss the, the battery energy storage item. So with that, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Vice Mayor Chapman has a question.
I have a question. Since we're moving the best item up to be first, the agenda was printed, so there may be those that were gonna wait until midway of our meeting in order to come. So will we accommodate those individuals if there should be any?
Well, the, the adjustment on this is the prerogative to adjust, so I'm not going to reopen a, a second time. I would say, who in the, here in the audience is here for best? If you wouldn't mind showing me your hands. There's a lot of people here that would represent the city, and I know that we've received countless emails, so there'll be, we have four different proclamations to make. We have some time beforehand, so. I mean, I, I believe that I would rather go ahead and get started rather than delay it to the end. To our city manager?
Yes, we in the afternoon had also noticed the community about the move of the agenda item, as well as we had reached out to the individual group members that the item was moved.
Okay.
Yeah.
To the beginning of the meeting, yes.
Yeah, that's helpful. Councilmember Wiley, did you have a question?
No, I didn't.
Okay, great, thanks. So we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so that's the change of our agenda. Next is the reports of the city council. The only, I'm not sure if anybody else had anything to, to share. The only thing that I had attended here recently was representing a voting member of LAFCO. There are some items that have been particular in, in the past as far as the city of Vacaville's concerned, and that's just because of the tax sharing agreement, and some of those are working through with LAFCO. There wasn't anything else to discuss, other than it was just an update, because with the, with LAFCO, it's all about the annexation and the processes when there's development. It requires a tax sharing agreement. So this is something that the city, cities and the county work through anytime there's an agreement. So things are moving forward, so. Looking at the lights, I'm gonna go to Councilmember Stockton.
Yes, from the last Joint Powers Authority Capsolano meeting on homelessness in the region, they announced that the next PIT count is going to be January 29th, 2026. I have a flyer here with a QR code. I'd like to provide it to the city if they don't already have it, so that if folks would like to volunteer, they can sign up. Our PIT count is essentially when we do a point in time count for the homeless individuals or unhoused in our community, and identify that, what that number of individuals is, and that number is used for us to apply for grants and assistance to be able to aid in trying to provide housing and services for those individuals. And so if you're interested, every person that can help us go out there and contact individuals would be greatly appreciated. Again, it is on January 29th, 2026, and if we can get that posted, that would be wonderful for folks to volunteer. That's it.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Richie?
So quickly, this is the first meeting since Thanksgiving, and one of the things that I do is utilizing the community's money, so I think it's appropriate to address the community. Every year, I try to take part of the district dollars, it's your guys' money, to reinvest it back in the community. And it's absolutely amazing. The Thanksgiving at the Veterans Hall, Post 165, there's over 1,100 people that ate, but the amount of kids and key members that came out to help for the three days ahead of that, it, it shows how amazing the city is. So just, your guys' money went to good use. There's so many kids, so many parents that serve this community, that gave back and helped people eat. So I just want to really appreciate you skillfully to use funds appropriately, but it was amazing to feed, to feel people, Thanksgiving, your guys' money. Thank you.
Councilmember Wiley?
I'm on the TRAF Committee for the Air Force Base, and this week they had the 99th and 100th of the C-46s that came off the production line, which arrived at Travis, and it was our 18th and 19th C-46, so it was really an exciting day to see that. And then later in the week, they had their Festival of Trees that raised money for Fisher House at David Grant, and they were very successful, and that provides housing for families of people who's in the hospital at David Grant. So those are two things I attended. I want to make you aware that tomorrow morning, between 9:00 and 12:00, there is an event at the Solano Event Center, put on by Assemblymember Lori Wilson, about accessibility in transportation. So if you have, she wants to hear from people that have concerns or issues or suggestions about how to make our transportation more accessible. So if you don't have plans, that would be tomorrow from 9:00 to 12:00 at the Texas Streets Event Center. Thanks.
All right, seeing no more lights, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to reports of the city manager. Do we have any reports to share?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, and community members. I have a quick announcement on the temporary public hours adjustment. So beginning, last week, our Housing and Community Services Department, they temporarily had to limit the public walk-in hours due to the staffing restraints and constraints. The front counter will be open for in-person visits from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. All the walk-in access will be reduced, but staff will continue to be available by phone during the regular business hours between 8:00 to 5:30 PM.
Great, thank you. And one final comment, since I haven't heard it yet, but I'll just share. Thank you to the public and anyone in the audience, and staff in this council, especially for staff's participation in Mayorman on Main. Your work behind the scenes, you all know who you are. Too many to count, because it takes the entire team of the city to produce something that is just really special. I've heard a lot of, I'm sure we've all heard a lot of comments from the council and the public. So thank you for making it successful. It is truly a wonderful time of the year, and I think the estimates are probably somewhere between 15,000 and 20,000 that were in attendance. So a wonderful, a wonderful event for Vacaville. It's been going on for decades, and it's just one of those special events each year, so. And I'm sure at some point in the future, we'll get an update on the video. We'll probably see something, right?
Yeah, video would be there at the January meeting. We were trying to do it today, but we were not able to finish it.
That's fine. Give the production a little bit of time. They deserve it. Okay. All right, so we're gonna go and move on to presentations. We do have four of them tonight, and they're all special, but I'm gonna start with our city attorney, Melinda Stewart. So you, you have a place on the dais, but you're going to be missed, and what I'd like to do is just read your proclamation. And in some cases, I do have my glasses, and so they did print it out in larger font, but the good thing I brought my glasses, because there's a lot of good things here. So let me just share some of this.
Come down and stand.
Well, I know, Melinda, you wanna come down here and stand? Yes, you do. Because you're gonna get to address the entire council, so.
You're so used to all these years being up on the dais, but today, you're being honored, so. Whereas Melinda Stewart will retire from public service on December 19th, concluding a remarkable 30-year career with the city of Vacaville, including nearly a decade as city attorney. And Melinda began her, her service in December of 1995 as deputy city attorney, promoted to assistant city attorney in 2003, and was appointed city attorney in 2016, demonstrating exceptional dedication, professionalism, and steady leadership throughout your career. And whereas during your tenure, you provided trust, legal advice to the city council, commissions, and staff, guiding the city through complex legal challenges, organizational transitions, and transformative community initiatives. And you played an instrumental role in negotiating major city contracts, including agreements for ecology, transit services, cable and wireless services, and employment contracts for three city managers, ensuring continuity, accountability, and long-term value for the community. And whereas you've provided critical legal guidance for significant community projects, including the redevelopment of the Nut Tree and the development of Lagoon Valley, helping shape landmarks that define Vacaville's character and quality of life. And you drafted important local legislation, including the Community Safety Ordinance, and the ordinance is establishing the Hotel Business Improvement District and Downtown Business Improvement District, supporting economic vitality and strengthening community partnerships. Needless to say, you've done a lot. You've been a part of so many things. And whereas you have prepared the city's first comprehensive city council policies and procedures, creating a clear and enduring framework for open, ethical, and effective governance for us as the council. And you have skillfully navigated the legal complexities of unprecedented wildfires, civil unrest, and the COVID-19 pandemic, offering steady, compassionate, and solutions-focused leadership during some of the most challenging moments in the city's history. And you've overseen complex litigation and tort claims portfolios, safeguarding the city's interests through, through thoughtful strategy, diligent risk management, and unwavering commitment to public service. And whereas, under your guidance, the city attorney's office grew from a staff of four to a staff of eight. And I have witnessed it, because I remember years ago when I was on staff, how difficult it was at times when even in transition, you were even down to three. It's been a lot. And under your guidance, the city attorney's office grew that staff, but also your ability to find both purpose and joy in your work, whether navigating complex legal matters, or simply addressing the daily challenges that keep city government running. You stood as a remarkable example of dedication and inspired others to embrace the true spirit of public service. And throughout your service, you have been known for your gracious leadership, kindness, and genuine care for colleagues, staff, and community members, qualities that have left a lasting and positive impact on our entire organization. And this is your legacy. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John Carley, Mayor, on behalf of the city of Vacaville and the city council, do hereby proclaim December 19th, 2025, as Melinda Stewart Day in the city of Vacaville, and urge all residents to join us in honoring and celebrating your extraordinary service, gracious leadership, and enduring legacy. Congratulations.
I came a little, little prepared. Thank you. That's a, that's a little bit overwhelming. I get tired just listening to, to that. But I did wanna take just a, a moment to say some public thanks, and I, we have a long agenda tonight, so I won't take too long. But I did wanna publicly thank first the, the city councils. So starting from 2016, with Mayor Augustine, with Supervisor Mashburn at that time, Councilmember Mashburn, through Mayor Roulette, and today Mayor Carley and our current council. It's not an easy job being on the council. You have to make some really tough decisions, and it's challenging when there are laws that while they provide opportunities, they also provide a lot of constraints. What you can do, when you can meet, who you can talk to, when you can talk to them. And so I really appreciate all of you entrusting me and the city attorney's office, great staff here, to, to help you navigate and help the city navigate through all of those laws and processes. I wanna thank the community for showing up, for sharing your vision for the city as a whole or on particular issues. It's important, and it's the way the city council knows what the community wants, what the community values, and what the community expects of their, of their leaders. I wanna thank city staff, and share with council, you have an extremely talented, hardworking, and loyal staff, and they're dedicated to making Vacaville the special place that it is. And they're led by an incredible group of department heads and senior leadership team, whom I've had the pleasure and the honor of working with. Some, Michelle, for my whole, my entire career here, 30 years. Brian McLean, who we're gonna honor in a few minutes, 20, 27 years. And all of them, and so, for so many years, in so many various capacities. Each of them works tirelessly every day, again, to implement the council's vision and to make the city what it is today. And I would say last but not least, but I, I've, I realize I, I have another, a couple of other people that are here tonight that I didn't expect. So I wanna publicly recognize the city attorney office staff and thank them. And I'll do this again, you know, when we celebrate next Friday, but I can't say enough about how grateful I am for their support of me, and the office, and the entire city. I could not, I couldn't do what I do without them. And I have to say, you couldn't have made a better choice for, as, for Andrea as your incoming city attorney. She's intelligent, she's seasoned, she's well-respected, and she's been an amazing wingwoman for me. And thank you, Andrea, and congratulations. And two other people that I have to thank, my husband Rob and my daughter Valerie. We have two sons that aren't here tonight. They surprised me. I had no idea they would be here. But I really couldn't have done it without, without them and their support over the years. So I appreciate the recognition and the acknowledgement, but it takes a village of, of all of you to make the city what it is. And so for that, I thank all of you.
Very nice. It's, it's so hard, it's, it's so hard to sum up what a whole career looks like. There you go. It's so hard to, to sum this up, which is, and we have a, a few of you who have chosen all at once to somehow conclude your career here in Vacaville. And, and so it's important that we do honor and we celebrate people's tenure and their legacy. And there's so many more like it, because that's what Vacaville really stands for. There's so many people who have 25 to 30 to 35 years, and some are at department head levels, and some have just been working to keep this city as a great city throughout their careers. And so, congratulations to our city attorney, Ms. Stewart, and glad the family could come and, and, well, there'll be more celebrations next week, right? This is just an opportunity publicly, because this is your last city council meeting, and so we just wanted to show you the honor that you're due. Thank you very much. Not to, as I look at this, yeah, I have to understand also as staff, I worked with all these people, because, you know, with my tenure. But now what I'd like to do is I'd like to ask Brian McLean to come forward. There you go. And, you know, I've had the privilege of also working with Brian all these years, when I was in the police department and you were in Public Works, and we were both trying to solve problems, you know, fiery in our own way, but problem solvers. That's just who you've always been, and you get things done. And I will just tell you personally, I'll miss you for that. And, but you do have another STA meeting tomorrow night. Don't leave.
It's on my calendar.
It's on your, on your calendar. And, and also, I think it's important to let people know that you were recently recognized at an STA Awards Dinner, just for your excellence and your outstanding. It was, it was the perfect choice to honor for this annual award, just your commitment. And if you truly understood what it's like to have your own team get recognized, like, yeah, that's our team. And everyone brags about you when it comes to all that you're doing, especially in the world of transportation. So with that, though, I'm also going to read this, and there's enough in here that I'm reading with, with my reading glasses on, because it's small print. So whereas today, we recognize and celebrate Brian McLean's retirement and his 20-plus years of outstanding service to the citizens of Vacaville and the Public Works Department. And whereas Brian was hired as a management analyst on July 1st, 2005, he was reclassed to Transit Manager on June 16, 2008, where he expanded Vacaville City Coach service to 30-minute routes, created the Golden Pass, which offers free public transportation to riders aged 80 and above, and converted the fleets of compressed natural gas, which recently he was instrumental in converting to electric. And whereas on August 16th, 2012, you were reclassed to Public Works Manager, where you underwent, your leadership city coach reached a major milestone of 500,000 riders annually. That's incredible for a city of our size. And whereas being promoted to Public Works Superintendent in 2015, you implemented the city's first GIS-enabled asset management and work order system to modernize field operations, and demonstrated exceptional leadership during emergency and flooding events. And you were then reclassed a Deputy Director of Public Works in May of 2020, where you played an important role in the city's response to COVID-19 impacts to downtown businesses, supported firefighting and mitigation efforts during the LNU Complex Fire, and led the city in Vacaville's SB 1383 Organics Recycling Implementation. And on May 30th, 2022, you were reclassed to Assistant Director of Public Works Maintenance Division, where your leadership and dedication resulted in your well-deserved promotion to Director of Public Works in October of 2022. And I remember that, because I soon thereafter, after I had retired, became mayor, and I'll never forget the day you and I sat in my office and just reflected on the careers, and we just couldn't believe where we were at. And I just want you to know how proud I am of you. It's been an honor. And whereas over the past three years, you've been instrumental in the planning and delivery of numerous major projects, including securing more than $8 million to expand the Rancho Lagunitas Detention Basin, overseeing the installation of- overseeing the installation of solar photovoltaic systems at eight city facilities, projected to save $24 million in energy costs over 25 years, and completing the Jepson Parkway Phase 2 project, while securing an additional $6 million towards Phase 3 of the project. And whereas as the Director of Public Works, you provided essential leadership to the department, fostering a can-do attitude, promoting a culture of inclusivity and nurturing future department leaders. And Brian, you will be missed by all of us and all of your coworkers and this community all across the city, but not more so than by its Public Works family and friends. So now I will just say that therefore be it resolved that as Mayor, I John Carley, and on behalf of the city of Vacaville and City Council, do hereby proclaim December 19th, 2025, as Brian McLean Day in the city of Vacaville, and wish you the best of health and happiness in your retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. I appreciate this, I really do. It really has been a, a, a long road. And I think, you know, the, the problem-solving aspect is really something that is ingrained in Public Works. I know my successor, who, like, like Melinda in having Andrea, Brian Oxley is going to be taking the lead and he, you are in good hands. Unlike the city attorney, I don't have a, a speech, so I'm just gonna tell you. That's why she's the city attorney. I will tell you that, you know, I grew up here in Vacaville. This has been my town. Went to school here. And I have appreciated the opportunities, you know, to really, to grow up in, in this atmosphere, in this town that has meant so much to me. So, I would be remiss if I didn't say your support of me and the department over the years has been absolutely instrumental in helping the department and the city really move the, the bar forward for Public Works and, and making the, this, this town that we all enjoy and live in a better place to live. And that's really what, you know, the heart of Public Works is about. Envisioning tomorrow and making it happen today. So with that, I thank you. I appreciate it. I'm ready to take the, the next step and start writing my book and, and changing, you know, turning over the page to, to start writing that new chapter. So, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, congratulations. You've just given me a new quote, envisioning tomorrow and making it happen today. That, that is a, a line. And actually, I have to say one last thing. Tomorrow night, one of the items that's on the STA agenda that I think is something to be proud of and it's something that's, it's because of you and your team. Jepson Parkway has been an initiative that wouldn't have happened, but not for Public Works at your leadership. Finding ways to have money that's available from another city so that we can move forward. But if there's one thing that anyone in government or public wants to hear is something that I know that they'll hear tomorrow night. And that is, the next phase of Jepson Parkway, Phase 3, is coming in, it's gonna start earlier because the project that you helped promote through STA came in on time and under budget. And the savings for that are being fast-forwarded to accelerate the Phase 3 portion. And it's because of the way you would look at things and get things done. That is, that is what makes Vacaville a better place, when we have staff like you and everyone else who can do things like that. So, congratulations. So more tomorrow night. And I still will call you, because I got some questions. Next up, I'd like to bring our director, our Economic Development Director forward, Don Burris. Don, where are you at? There you are, looking sharp as always. Yes. Well, Don, today we recognize and celebrate you and your retirement with your 10 years of outstanding service to the citizens of the city of Vacaville. And whereas Don Burris has served the Vacaville community and the region with distinction during a career in local government and economic development spanning more than two decades. And Don, you first joined the city of Vacaville in the mid-2000s, later returning in 2020 to lead the Economic Development Services Department, bringing with you deep expertise in biotechnology, advanced manufacturing, electric vehicles, solar technology, alternative fuels and downtown revitalization. And that paragraph is rather short compared to everything else that you bring. And whereas upon your return, your leadership played a pivotal role in transforming Vacaville into a recognized hub for biotechnology and advanced manufacturing, guiding the city's biotechnology and advanced manufacturing initiative and positioning Vacaville at the forefront of the state's growing biotechnology and bioeconomy. And whereas under your strategic direction, globally respected companies, and I do mean globally, including Agonist Bio, LG Chem, Polaris Pharmaceuticals, and Transwestern Ventures, just to name a few, acquired more than 120 acres in the Vacaville, or in the Vacaville Valley Business Park for new biomanufacturing facilities. And for those of you who don't know, all that green space that's on Interstate 80, all of those have been identified in, in that land purchased by biomanufacturing facilities. And this generating significant private investment and creating long-term economic opportunities for the community. And if you didn't see it, you should watch the last special study session from last week in which our director was able to give us an update prior to his retirement about what we should see in things to come. And so thank you for that. And whereas Don was instrumental in establishing the California Biomanufacturing Center, the CBC, a nonprofit dedicated to advancing biomanufacturing statewide, strengthening Vacaville's position as a leader in workforce development, innovation and industry collaboration. And you cultivated strong relationships and partnerships with Solano Community College, Vacaville Unified School District, the Workforce Development Board of Solano County, and regional universities to ensure a robust pipeline of skilled talent that supports the city's expanding life science and advanced manufacturing sectors. And throughout your career, you have expressed deep appreciation for working with companies that create transformational opportunities for communities, noting the immense reward that comes from seeing cutting-edge industries reach production scale and deliver high-quality career jobs. And your vision and energy and unwavering dedication have left an enduring mark on the city of Vacaville, laying a strong foundation for continued economic growth, innovation and prosperity. And whereas the city council and city staff deeply appreciate Don's years of leadership, professionalism and service, and honor the legacy you leave as you conclude your final day, December 19th, 2025. So now therefore be it resolved that I, John Carley, Mayor, and on behalf of the Vacaville City Council, do hereby proclaim December 19th, 2025, as Don Burris Day in the city of Vacaville, and wish you the best of health and happiness in your retirement. Congratulations.
So, um. Who was that guy? I'm at a loss for words, to be honest. I know you guys are thinking that's impossible, because I'm probably the biggest talker in the room. It's been an incredible journey. There are so many people to thank. It's a little surreal at the same time. I want to start first with my city council. I think it's important for you all to know that my success was absolutely predicated on your support. The conferences, the events, enhanced budget was the reason why I was able to do the good work that I was able to do. So I thank you all for your support. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the staff in the City Manager's Office, because that staff knows how crazy economic development is. One day I'm in the office all day and the next day I'm touring five companies, right? So, I want to say thank you to Michelle for her years of institutional knowledge that helped me understand the city. The administrative team, that's always been there to pull together reports and data that I need. Have to say thank you to them as well. To my fellow department heads, I gotta call Brian McLean out, because Brian and I have done some crazy things at 5:30 in the morning for the sake of economic development. The planning staff, Paimon and Albert, have been just rock-steady for me. I'm out in the field with companies, not knowing if the zoning or the land use is going to be allowed. And those guys would always pick up a call, because companies don't want to wait. Oh my goodness. So many people to say thank you. So if I didn't call you your name out individually, please forgive me, but you've all been so beneficial to helping me be successful. My career started in Silicon Valley after graduate school from Purdue University. And if someone would have asked me if I'd work in government, I would have told you, hell no. That is not a career option for me. But ironically, my next-door neighbor was the mayor, offered me a job in his office. And I, I was bit by the community service bug and that's kind of what made me stay. But I will have to tell just one quick story. Working with a company that our redevelopment agency provided some startup funds for, about $1.5 million. That company grew from a small solar company into solar power, excuse me, solo power. And then they were able to build new facilities and expand operations. We also helped out a company that you all may be familiar with, but Sun Power. So I'm at the grocery store, in line at the grocery store, and the gentleman behind me, his phone is so loud, I can hear his family's conversation. And his son is all excited and he's screaming his head off, because he just got a new job. He'd been out of college for almost a year and hadn't found a job. And his pops said, well, who are you working with? And he's like, this new solar company called Sun Power. And I almost turned around and said, hey, that's one of my companies. That was the day I realized that public service was gonna be my, my next career. The idea that I could actually do something that made a difference in my community, I, I was, I was bit. So, and I stayed and here I am. So, that's my why, why public service. I couldn't have been more thrilled to be in the city of Vacaville and work with such amazing staff to make all these things happen. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank, yeah. I will, I will say, I've had the privilege of having an office right next to yours in City Hall. And so it's not without, it's common practice of, in some cases, making you late for a meeting, because they're an exciting economic opportunity to discuss. But here's the thing that I want the public to really understand. We, we often look at all the departments of local government and say, oh, you, police, fire, you know, Public Works, Utilities, and then all the internals from the HR to, to legal. All of it is necessary to run a municipal corporation. But one of the things that I began to see, and I know all of us on the council appreciate you and the team, for everyone, I mean, every one of us could speak on behalf of their experiences with you. Economic development is a driver for, for a vibrant community. We can start with the foundation, but people want to feel community. And they do it because they have homes, we deal with that. But they have jobs. And the focus of economic development isn't just, it's not just this thing about money. It's about opportunity. And you taught me that. And then I had the privilege the last few years, whether it's attending different conferences, to actually see it, because that's the one thing that I believe we needed continuity on. And just want to say thank you for that, because it was, it was on-the-job training for me at the different conferences and to learn what it really means to bring in investment money and, and how that translates to jobs and that, how that changes a community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, and I know you have something else that you would like to present. So now you have the mic.
This is so surreal. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and members of the City Council. Don Burris here, Director of Economic Development Services. And I'm here to present the last presentation for this council session for a very talented young man that came to Vacaville in 2022 to start a company, a life science company called Life Space Labs. In 2022, I had the, the privilege of working with Team California and attending an event called Meet the Consultants. At that event, I'd never been there before. It's an opportunity for economic development professionals throughout the state of California to meet the top site selectors in the United States. And site selectors are people that are hired by corporations to go find the best location for their company to locate in established facilities. At that conference, two of the top site selectors, a gentleman by the name of Matt Shuhai from DeLorean Tousch and Andrew Shapiro from Diggs, Lacy and Shapiro, asked if Don Burris was in the room. I don't know these gentlemen. I didn't know anyone in the room. And I was almost afraid to raise my hand. They came back and spent two hours at my table, telling me how well we've done with our biotech strategy. But they had some notes for me in order to really solidify our position. And one of those notes was, you have to have a life science incubator. As fate would have it, it was less than a month later that I was able to meet and develop a relationship with Depeche Lad, who is the CEO of Life Space Labs. Since 2022, and when Depeche opened their doors here in Vacaville, that young man's had nothing but success with his business and bringing new life science companies into the city of Vacaville. So, just recently, myself, Councilmember Silva and Professor Jim DeClo from Solano Community College, put together an application for the Biocom Catalyst Award. So, Biocom, and I'll quickly give you just a background on who Biocom is. Biocom is a life science advocacy organization that's been around for over 30 years. They help to provide resources to the industry to help keeping the science and technology moving forward. And each year, the organization presents the Catalyst Award to honor young life science professionals who are making a difference and moving science forward. So, Mayor Carley, it's my pleasure to present to you and to the council, Depeche Lad, CEO and founder of Life Space Labs and Flex Bioculture.
Good evening, Depeche. First of all, I have to say that it is our privilege to honor you, especially with everything that we're doing focusing on biotech and advanced manufacturing. And I had the privilege of coming into your space before anything was in there. And the excitement that you had was, it was contagious. And I know that I had heard that this was something we needed. You know, Don, you were saying, if we could only have an incubator, if we could only do these things. And the exciting part now is, is you have no room left. The fact, and the, the key is, is we need something bigger. We can't thank you enough for that, because this ties into the very essence of when we, when we package up advanced manufacturing or biotech, a lot of people say, well, what does that mean? In your world, but, okay, in your world, you know.
It could be our world.
It could be your world. Not everybody understands the value of it, because what it does in an industry, but what it does to a community is, there's, there's careers, there's jobs. It's economic vitality and we can't thank you enough. And so with that, I would like to read this proclamation. And whereas each year, Biocom seeks nominations from industry professionals to honor and recognize outstanding individuals in California under the age of 40 who are making an impact in advancing human health through scientific discovery, entrepreneurship, leadership, community engagement and innovation. And whereas those honored will receive the coveted Biocom Catalyst Award for their dedication and tireless work to advance human health. work to advance human health. And whereas Depeche Lad, CEO and founder of Life Space Labs and Flex Bioculture, established a life science incubator and co-working wet lab facility in the city of Vacaville, attracting numerous early-stage biotech companies to the city of Vacaville. So now therefore be it resolved that I, John Carley, Mayor, on behalf of the Vacaville City Council, do hereby recognize Depeche Lad and congratulate him on his success and this award, both of which are well deserved. Congratulations.
prepare a speech. So I'll give everything I got about what we came for, what we are doing, and what the future looks like. Most of us don't know where we exist, but we're near Vac Valley Parkway. We have a facility. We house over 10 to 15 startups, ranging anywhere from half a million to $50 million funded companies now. And as Mayor said, we're running out of space and we are on our way to expanding and looking for a 20,000 square foot facility, which we hope to acquire, not just rent anymore. Our company have grown from just myself, running around, taking out trash, all the way up to now, I think we're at seven employees and looking to hire 10 more next year. And it all started with just a simple conversation with Don and a text message and said, Hey, we have this idea, we want to turn it up. And here we are, you know, two and a half years later. The city has been an instrumental support in what we do. And we've been now asked to go to different parts of California to replicate this model that exists here in Vacaville. And the answer is like, what are you guys doing so differently? And I said, the key ingredient here is the city and the community that we work for. And I think the partnerships that we have built with the Solano Community College, the Workforce Assembly Board, and the city, I think that has enabled us to do something different. And as of today, we probably created one of the most unique models. And we're super excited to be here. We want to be, this is our home, that's what we call it. And we want to be here for the next foreseeable future. Some of the folks who are here for almost 30 years, and that's what we want to be. We would rather grow our company here and turn it into something bigger than ever, anything that's out there. And thank you for the award.
Absolutely. And I would say congratulations on having the vision. Because what you have done in in identifying that this was the place, you could have gone to Sacramento, West Sacramento, you could get to a lot of different places. This is, this is where there is an epicenter between the different, from the Bay Area to the Sacramento region and the university systems. But the, the fact that you've created it here and the partnerships that have been formed, and to be able to scale it is a reflection, not only just on the city of Vacaville, but even greater than that, entrepreneurial mindset that such as yourself, and it certainly fits in with our biomanufacturing plan and program. And so we're very grateful because you, the truth is, is you're incubating these companies that start up that then need places to go. And whether they're all in Vacaville, the truth is, they're in the region. And it lifts everybody up into the region. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
It really has been a kind of a privilege to honor our staff and also part of our economic development, which is strategically what is important for us to do at a council meeting. There's so many other proclamations and recognitions we do throughout the city that are not here. These that are done here typically are very focused on our departments and our employees. And so for that, we're forever grateful. We know that next Friday, we have a retirement parties for all three of you. And that's going to be at Ulatas? Where's that going to be at?
It's at the Harvest and Event Center.
Harvest and Event Center, what time?
It's from 3:00 to 5:00.
3:00 to 5:00 o'clock. So it's going to be fun. Certainly appreciate all the service. And so congratulations to all of you. So with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. We have items 9A to 9M. This would be an opportunity for any member of the public or the council to pull an item for discussion if you choose. So Councilmember Silva, since you're walking here, I just want to let you know this is consent. So did you want to pull any item? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and look for a motion.
I have a second.
So we have a motion, Vice Mayor's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So now we'll move on to business from the floor. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any item that's not on tonight's agenda, but it is in our jurisdiction and our purview. So with that, I'll go ahead and open it up. You have three minutes to approach the council on any item that's not on the agenda. I believe everyone here is probably to speak on the agenda. So I'll go ahead and close business from the floor. Okay, come forward.
It's open. Yeah, that's fine.
Most residents of any given city are so busy with just getting by day to day, paying bills, that they don't really follow what's going on in their city. And they hope that the elected members of their city council are making decisions within the best interest of the residents of the city. California Forever represents an excellent example of how city leaders can deal for themselves at the expense of the people who elected them to do, to do good. What I have here, for the benefit of a lot of people who aren't normally here, this is a compiled from the report that the county staff did during 2024, that represents the amount of money that California Forever is going to cost taxpayers of Solano County as it gets built out. Because all the magical things that California Forever claims it's going to do, it's going to take taxpayer input to build the infrastructure. And that's something that California Forever doesn't talk about. Neither do various elected officials here in Solano County. When they start talking about all these wonderful things California Forever is going to do, they don't talk about the $49 billion just in transportation infrastructure that the county residents will pay for before anything in California Forever happens. I just think that people need to be aware of that, because it's kind of fading from people's awareness. But California Forever is still out there. That's why they're busy taking over the Sassoon City Council and getting themselves made into a part of Sassoon, so that they can start making bank off of the backs of the taxpayers of Solano County. So any council members who start making happy noises about, oh, California Forever is going to do this, that, and it's going to be wonderful, just remember, ladies and gentlemen, there's billions of dollars that we're going to pay, because the people from San Jose, the multi-billionaires, are really smart. And they're going to do everything on our backs.
Thank you.
Good evening. Vacaville City Board members, members of the public. My name is Kevin Rowe. I'm here to talk to you guys about a topic that is important to me. Now that I am an adult who is working and going to the school in the city of Vacaville, I realize that there is a lot of room for improvement. One area of improvement that Vacaville should work on is their lack of cannabis dispensaries. The lack of legal cannabis dispensaries causes the increase in the legal cannabis sales market here in the city of Vacaville. Vacaville has a stellar police force, so adding legal cannabis dispensaries will help further reduce the black market. That is created when no one has a place to get cannabis legally and locally. And obviously, the greatest benefit from cannabis dispensaries in your city is the tax revenue. So you're thinking to yourself, why doesn't the city of Vacaville want to make cannabis dispensaries a higher priority? When Benicia, Fileo, Dixon, Fairfield, even Sassoon City, has multiple, have multiple cannabis dispensaries with their small portion, oh, my Lord, populations and are thriving. Vacaville is the second most populated city in Solano County, and is missing out on all of this tax revenue. That could be used to make the city of Vacaville a better place to live in and work and go to school, and such as myself. It's been nearly five years since the city of Vacaville, the Vacaville City Council approved ordinances for cannabis dispensaries, and then deemed setting regulations and permitting as a low priority, causing the city of Vacaville to miss out on years of monetary tax revenue. So I think it's about time that the city of Vacaville makes that a higher priority. My name is Kevin Rowe. Thank you, guys, for your time. I really appreciate you, guys, for listening to my opinions.
Thank you. So before anybody else comes up, here's what I'd like to also, anyone else who's coming forward, go ahead and make a line so that I know who's speaking next. I just want to say that there's going to be a lot of conversations. There's probably going to be topics that are coming just after this, that you're going to, you're going to, it's going to resonate with you, for you, maybe against some of what you're going to hear. I simply would say this, there's no, this isn't an audience, performative audience for her, like cheers and jeers and clapping. Let people share what they want to say. And it's not necessarily based upon who claps the most, who opposes. It's really about being able to say what you want to say and letting the council hear it. So with that, thank you. Come, come forward.
Hello, council members. I'm Mackenzie Barnhill. I've lived in Vacaville my whole life. One thing I've noticed recently and have really been loving is the inclusion of more local art and murals downtown. I really think it enriches the community environment. One thing I would love to see is the inclusion of more places to lock your bike up at Town Square. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the suggestion. Again, what I'm going to say, because we're going to get into some real testy things. So I would just ask you to hold the applause. There's no need to applause every time someone speaks, but just be able to share. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, Honored Patero, Fearful Student Union, Fire School District Governing Board, I'm here as an individual. I teach here at Vacaville. And you have a beautiful city. Your city manager came from Fairfield. And what I'd like to ask the city council to do, and I would be happy to be, to be part of this, is to start an adopted street program. I know you have programs already where you, which you want to remove graffiti, you have to organize with the police and the fire department. You have some neighborhood programs that are like big nonprofit. What we've done in Fairfield is we, the city has created all these public areas, so you can adopt a street and just participate in adopting that same street. I've adopted three streets in Fairfield. My little group meets every Friday morning from 8:00 to 9:00, just for an hour, to do that. The requirement, I believe, is just twice a year, you, your little organization or whatever, small group can just take their time and however, how often they want to do it. The budget is about, about $10,000. And the city of Fairfield provides the bags, the gloves, the vests, and grabbers. And what we do is we pick up the trash, take a picture, send it to Public Works, and they come pick up the trash. So you have a fantastic city manager here. She can fill you in and all of that. I've spoken to a few of your city council members. And like I said, I teach at Solano Community College. I teach here, and many of my students live here, and they'll be happy to participate. And I'll be happy to participate, too. So thank you very much for all of you and for all of your service. Love you. Have a good evening.
Yeah, thank you. It sounds to me like our city manager is aware of the program.
And congratulations to Dr. Silva.
Dr. Silva. Thank you. All right, seeing no one else, I'm going to go ahead and close business from the floor, and we'll move on to 11. 11 is a public area which has been continued. So we'll move on to business 12. And we moved the best discussion up first, ahead of the business item of A. So we'll start with the best item. So with that, I'll turn it over to our, our city clerk.
Sorry, as you mentioned, this item is the study session for the best battery storage facilities. And Senior Planner Albert Ino and Paimon Bavand are here to present.
Good evening, City Council. My name's Albert Inolz. I'm a senior planner with the Community Development Department. And the item that I'm presenting tonight is a study session on battery energy storage systems and a draft ordinance. Specifically tonight, staff is requesting that the city council conduct a study session about battery energy storage systems, and to also receive public comments on the draft ordinance that we're going to be talking about tonight. For the conversation tonight, staff felt it was important to introduce definitions and terminologies. Back of the meter refers to energy systems or resources that are located on the customer side of the electricity meter, such as those for a home, business, or other facility. Front of the meter refers to energy systems or store resources that are connected directly to the utility grid before the electricity meter that measures a customer's consumption. Such facilities are utility companies, independent power producers, or grid operators. One other term important for this conversation is thermal runaway, which is a self-reinforcing, uncontrolled increase in temperature within a system, often leading to damage, fire, or explosion. This topic all started back on September 10th of 2018 with the adoption of Senate Bill 100 in the state legislature, in which the state declared that all retail electricity sold in California must be renewable by 2045. It assigned a task to update the state's renewable portfolio standard to ensure 60% of the California's electricity is renewable by 2030. It also required the creation of a joint policy report on SB 100 by 2021, and every four years thereafter. The next sequence in the saga began on March 15, 2021, when that joint agency report was published. It was a joint report that was prepared by the California Energy Commission, the California Public Utilities Commission, and the California Air Resources Board. And what they had determined in order to achieve the state legislature's goal by 2045, was that they found out a core scenario of adding 145 gigawatts of utility-scale capacity by 2045 was possible, but it needed to include 49 gigawatts of battery storage. The next sequence that's notable was on June 30th of 2022, when the state legislature adopted AB 205. What that did was it offered an opt-in certification process with the California Energy Commission for these battery facilities. It created a streamlined process of 270 days for the review of a project, once it's been done, deemed complete, for it to be approved. It does not require compliance with local regulations. However, projects must have a community benefit plan with local organizations. Battery, battery energy storage systems is a hot topic right now. It is really coming forward because of the state clean energy goals. That's driving the demand for energy storage. These front of the meter best facilities store grid energy and then discharge it during the peak demand, which is in the evening hours. This technique is used to improve grid reliability and efficiency, but there are concerns among the public about fires, thermal runaway, shelter in place orders, and contamination. Those concerns are supported by recent developments that have been occurring within Solano County, starting in February 8th of last year, when Cal Peak Vacadixan submitted to Solano County an application to construct a 100-megawatt, our guess, best project next to the Vacadixan substation along Interstate 80. The next application occurred on November 20, November 13th of last year, when the California Energy Committee California Energy Commission received an opt-in application request for a new Corby best project in Solano County. On September 19th of last year, another application was received by the California Energy Commission for the Middle River Power best project. This time, it was in city limits. One last saga to this was when the state legislator, legislature adopted Senate Bill 254, which further solidified the ability to bypass local review and community input. It made more projects eligible to participate in the CEC opt-in process, and it assumed that these projects provide a net positive economic benefit. These preliminary applications are shown on the map on the screen, Middle River Power being within Vacaville city limits along Kilkeny Road on, at Interstate 80. The Corby battery storage is located within unincorporated Solano County at Kilkeny Road and Burns Road. There was a CEC public notice for a community meeting that the public may be aware of that occurred in November. The last application that we made reference to was Cal Peak Vacaville Dixon LLC. That's an unincorporated Solano County next to the Vacaville Dixon substation at 5157 Quinn Road. To our knowledge, that this has not been submitted to the California Energy Commission as a separate application yet. The current regulatory framework for Vacaville is that battery energy storage systems are not allowed anywhere within the Vacaville city limits. We do not have any best specific development. There are no projects that have been submitted to our city, but there are growing concerns about the potential impacts to sensitive receptors without development standards to safeguard public health, safety, and welfare. This was prevalent as a concern before city council, and so last year in May, the Vacaville City Council adopted an urgency ordinance to prohibit new best projects within the city. That prohibition was further extended for another, for a total of two years on June of last year. That moratorium extends until May 14th of next year. And so at the conclusion of that moratorium, city council directed staff to investigate, learn more about this subject topic, and provide options to city council for what to do with this. And that workload occurred in March of last year to June of this year, in which the city and the county coordinated and participated in various technical working groups, with information gathering being at the forefront of our goal. So our next step in this process was to prepare solutions that might be able to be used by this council for the regulation of battery energy storage systems. And what staff has done is drafted a ordinance framework, and it looks something like this, where we're gonna be talking about in more greater detail. Definitions and applicability, land use and siting standards, development standards, permitting process, public benefit agreement criteria, and then commissioning and decommissioning. We will note that the framework that we've created has been generally modeled after Solano County's ordinance. Some considerations on the ordinance before the council as part of this study session is that definitions and applicability are intended to explain the purpose of the ordinance. It identifies what type of facilities are applicable. Mainly, we're noting those facilities that have a capacity greater than 40 kilowatts per hour. It also defines battery energy storage systems. The land use and siting standards identify that these types of facilities could be conditionally permitted within the public facility, industrial park, and business park zoning districts. They would not be allowed within high or very high fire hazard severity zones. They would not be allowed within the Nut Tree Airport compatibility zones. They would not be allowed within the city's northeast growth area until such a time the city can plan for its future of development. And there are also standards for large buffers away from sensitive uses, such as residential, hospital, and other nursing homes. In the ordinance, the development standards are intended to provide regulations that govern how lighting and noise ought to be controlled at these sites. That identifies provisions for security as well as screening and landscaping. The permitting process section identifies a rigorous preliminary application process that obligates a proposal to go before the community, ever before submitting an application to the city. It identifies a formal application process that includes an evaluation of those hazards that could be affecting the city, and then also environmental review and technical The ordinance covers a public benefit criteria applicable to those larger battery energy storage systems, such as tier two and tier three, as defined by NFPA. Examples of what a public benefit could be include training and equipment for emergency personnel, investments in local organizations or community projects, contributions to city initiatives, or projects that benefit the community as a whole. Last but not least, there's a requirement for a commissioning plan that identifies emergency response plan, outlines safety requirements as well as weed abatement, and then a decommissioning plan at the end of life. Staff felt that it was necessary to help provide a picture of what the standards look like and how restrictive they do create across the entire city. The suitability analysis accounts for sensitive uses and a requirement to provide a minimum 300-foot buffer away from those uses, residential hospitals and nursing homes. It also eliminates sites that are poised or have already been developed or unsuitable lands, such as hillside areas or existing commercial or industrial properties. It eliminates the northeast growth area because it's not eligible until a specific plan can be created for the larger growth of that particular area. And then staff also identified those future known development growth areas, such as the east of Leisure Town, that ought to be eliminated from this potential. And so the next few slides are intended to provide an illustration of what the standards would do and what properties would be eliminated from consideration. This map shows all of the residential properties and a 300-foot buffer around those areas. This eliminates those hillside areas, as well as properties that are developed or will be developed with other activities, such as industrial uses or commercial uses. This green area disqualifies the northeast growth area. And then this next color of turquoise identifies future development within the east of Leisure Town area. What it results in is only three potentially eligible sites. These are not intended to identify that there are projects submitted to the city. We do not have any projects. These are just illustration to show how much of the city would be eliminated by the ordinance that's before the council tonight. We have done some community outreach. On October 22nd, 2025, we held a community meeting at the Eladis Community Center that was attended by approximately 75 people. Public comments have been expressed by the public about this project. Concerns about, well, since publication of the draft ordinance, the city has received approximately 150 emails. I believe the council has that as part of the packet, and that's part of your diastole. Those emails express a variety of concerns about allowing best facilities within the city. Ultimately, staff observed about five common themes among the correspondence. The public is concerned over the potential of these facilities to ignite or burn, emitting smoke and toxic fumes that would jeopardize the health, safety, and welfare of the public. The public is concerned about that best facilities will decrease property values and increase insurance costs for homeowners in close proximity to these facilities. The public expressed concern that a thermal runaway event or fire would shut down major transportation corridors, such as Interstate 80 and regional facilities, such as Kaiser Hospital, that are necessary for the public. The public expressed concern that the city has insufficient funding and resources to respond to an emergency event at a best facility. And then the public expressed concern about the potential impacts on the environment, including creekways, agricultural properties, and wildlife due to a thermal runaway event. We wanted to let the council know that city staff has received all these comments, and we hear the public's concerns. And we're thoroughly working to address those concerns by conducting additional site analysis to determine suitability, such as maybe applying greater setbacks to those properties that we identified on the screen. In addition, we're working with Larson and Tubro to evaluate battery types, to determine the safest options for the city council and for the city of Vacaville. And we really were hoping that this additional information will help staff revise the draft ordinance and provide council with various options that could be used to address the public concerns. We wanted to note that this draft ordinance was published. A lot of these comments came after we notified the public that the ordinance is available for review. And it's a 45-day comment period, so that way we can collect enough public comments on it. That is set to extend, extend until December 22nd, and people can learn about this ordinance at the city's website at cityofvacaville.gov/best, and those comments can be sent to me. Looking forward, we have created a milestone for the council as well as for the public, so everybody knows what the plan is. We've already drafted the ordinance and published it. November 7th, we held a study session similar to the one that we're doing tonight with the Planning Commission. We're here tonight with the city council, but we're also looking ahead at potentially having a meeting with the Airport Land Use Commission on December 12th, or potentially in January. Our next stop would be, depending on the feedback that we receive from the public, as was from the city council, scheduling the item before the Planning Commission in January of next year, following up with another public hearing with the city council, and potentially having an ordinance in place should the council desire to, just in time for the expiration of the existing moratorium. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions about this. This is a study session, so we're all ears of the council.
Yeah, thank you for that. And, and I'm sure the council will have a chance to ask questions, and then we'll open it up to the public. Because I, I do recognize that there are, there is an organized approach within our community in the region and throughout the county, to have the best available knowledge we possibly can. A question, this is really a time for the council for a few questions before we really can dive into it. And a reminder, so many of the emails, I'll just have to say, so many of the emails, without knowledge, they read as if there is a belief that there is a project in front of the council. And I'll just say on behalf of the council, there is no project. Anyone who listens to what was just said in the future, this is recorded, please share it. It's important for people to know that this council directed staff to have a moratorium while we studied it. This, all this is, is a study session to now listen to the public based on concerns, based upon a draft ordinance, in conjunction, knowing what we've heard, and that is that the county is going through the same process. So a lot of the answers to the emails that probably weren't responded to by the council because it's a business item, this should be the response tonight, because it is a study session. So we certainly welcome your input as we develop an ordinance. And so your, your comments are going to be received tonight as we move forward through this process. As far as a question, though, under the SB 254, where they further solidified the fact that the land use and zoning has even less control than even under 205. What I'm also looking for is, is we will have a, a process moving forward where through legislate, you know, legislation, can we adopt this or some version of this policy and then include it into our legislative platform so that when we move forward, sometimes it's not about being on defense, it's about going to Sacramento and changing the rules that are poorly written for urban and suburban communities. Will we be able to do that?
Yes, and we can work with our lobbyists to start that process.
Because we can accomplish all of this, and under 254, the CEC can say, we don't care. The goal really is to have reasonableness in Sacramento, also to the CEC and statewide to say, you should care. You should recognize that not all technologies assume the same risk. So there's all kinds of implications, and that is the hope for having a good draft ordinance. Councilmember Silva?
Yeah, so questions, folks on my questions. Can you, so the, I think one main concern I continue here is just about the safety concerns regarding lithium ion. Within those state regulations, is there anything to prevent certain types of technology over others when we're talking about best? Because when we say best, that, that's not specific to lithium ion. There's different types of technologies.
The state legislature has not limited the types of technologies.
Okay. And if municipalities limit certain specific technologies, are there any case study on that or of how that's viewed? I think there's only been one, shoot, one or, one or two cases, one case that the state pursued, pushing a project through?
We are aware that cities can't pursue limitations on the types of technologies, and we're aware that it's within our authority to be able to limit those as well.
And then, can you, two questions, two more questions. So the 300-foot buffer, I was able to attend a portion of a community meeting, but can you just clarify why 300?
The drafting of an ordinance like this is based off of best practices. We looked at a variety of different jurisdictions inside of California, as well as other areas of the country. And what we found as to be a middle-of-the-road type of standard was that 300-foot radius away from sensitive receptors. The National Fire Protection Agency has separate standards that are less restrictive to those. We found in some cases, other cities had adopted more strict standards. In our conversations with Solano County, what we learned was, with their conversations with separate utility providers, that applying a greater setback without having any technical foundation for requiring that would likely push those utility companies to just go straight through to the CEC process and strip away any ability for us to be able to further regulate those types of projects.
And last question I'll have is, the community benefit plan, are there specific details onto what that constitute? Anytime a business put, whether puts in a particular best project, is there a certain, like, limit, or is that defined on how much, what a community benefit is and how much that would be?
It's not defined, and it's not limiting either.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Stockton?
Yes. In your review of some of these best practices or some of these different ordinances that cities have, have you looked at some of the locations that have experienced some of these catastrophic thermal runaway events to see how their ordinances were and how they may have been changed after those incidents, like Moss Landing or Chandler, Arizona, Surprise, Arizona, some of these other ones that have been big with injuries and things like that?
Yes.
Okay, and were the ordinances, are they still within this 300-foot barrier even after they've had to evacuate things, you know, up to, I want to say it's been several miles, hundreds or thousands of acres? So I'm just curious, for those locations, is it, is it common for them to still be at the 300?
The, the scenarios that we found in which the thermal runaway events were occurring has resulted in design changes to the types of facilities that are created nowadays. In those scenarios that we found the thermal runaway events, we did see a desire to change those standards to require greater setbacks. To the council member's point about those evacuation areas, some of them have been miles and miles as a result of these facilities burning for not days, but for weeks potentially. What we, what we have observed about these types of facilities is that the technology does change. And so the scenario that occurs over in Moss Landing, that did occur there, the construction of that type of facility is no longer allowed, in which all of the batteries were stored inside of a warehouse, had fire suppression systems ready to go. And itself created a cataclysmic event in which, once it caught fire and the fire suppression took place, it created further issues within that entire facility. The answer to that scenario was to make them all outdoor, create smaller containment units, and then introduce more monitoring systems to make sure that they did not have that event of a thermal runaway. This technology is shifting, and we don't have a lot of examples of a brand-new system having been implemented and then going through a period of time of observation yet.
But Moss Landing has had two incidents, correct?
I'm, I wouldn't be able to tell you.
Okay. So I, I think they've had more than one, is what I'm getting at. And so it would be interesting to know how their policy or ordinance has changed as those incidents have occurred. Also, if, I recognize that the state gets to do what the state wants to do. There are elected officials that make up our state government representatives that make some of these decisions, but if the CEC, which my understanding is an appointed group of non-electeds that are appointed by the governor, if they approve a 205 waiver, or allow one of these companies to come in despite whatever ordinance we do, what options do we have to protect our community if that was something that was to happen in Vacaville?
I think one of the things that we're learning from the community, because the community has been a very good partner in this effort, we've had individuals that have been able to provide us with information that allows us to do additional research, is that what we've recently learned is that when a jurisdiction has standards in place, that the CEC still potentially considers those standards, and forces a facility operator to work with that jurisdiction to figure out exactly how they can develop a project that would comply.
And I guess that partially answers my question, because is battery technology one of those things that they consider with what municipalities are comfortable with, with their local ordinances?
I don't know that level of detail yet.
Okay, that's it for now.
Vice Mayor Chapman.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. The two questions I had in regards to the PG&E, their buffer zone and the CEQA, did you have a chance to obtain that information? And I'm looking at the mirror, because before I asked, this was the staff.
We have a meeting with PG&E next week, so that's when we'll plan to find out the answers. They were not available to answer the questions in the last two days.
Oh, okay, okay. Then I'll just share that with PG&E, because of the situation that occurred at Moss Landing, they have a substation that's very close to it, and they were impacted by the events that occurred at Moss Landing. I had an opportunity to speak to a couple of individuals closely related to PG&E, and the question came up whether or not we had inquired about the required distance, the required buffer that PG&E has for any of those battery stations be placed in close proximity to them. So if we knew that, because off the top, they thought it was about a Mao, the individuals I was speaking to, and I'm not saying that it's being gospel, but they were thinking it was substantial, and I would think that would be important, some information that we could use in preparing our ordinance. And then the question came up about the CEQA, whether or not the areas that they are proposing, the four companies, whether or not a CEQA has been done in those areas, and that's information that would benefit us as well, correct?
I would agree with your assessments. I can tell you that the projects that have submitted to the California Energy Commission, they have not published any CEQA documents yet, they're just starting that evaluation process, and so that's part of the reason why it's not available yet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Wiley.
Thank you for the information, and for all the emails and things that we got this week. There are just a couple of questions right now. One of the issues deals with community benefit, because part of the law says that they have to provide a community benefit, but it doesn't seem like we get much of an input on what that community benefit would be, from what I've heard. So, but I just want to state that the city is, council is not, like, looking at this as a great money-making adventure, because some of the emails were kind of accusatory, saying, "Why are you out to sell us out?" And I just want to say, that's not the intent, that we're not just trying to find ways to make money for the city. There is a need for storage of energy, but we're not trying to make a money-making proposition out of finding companies to come here. The other thing is that, on one of the things you said, away from different areas, you don't include schools, you have hospitals, but it seems like schools would be one of the things that would be added to that. That was on, I think, Slide 22, or one of the slides where they mentioned away from items, so can you include schools or not?
Sorry, we did.
Okay, all right. And then, the other thing is, if we go ahead and have a draft ordinance that allows battery storage, will that open us up to allowing other kind of dangerous items, or would we specify only battery storage? So that was one question that was posed, will it open us up to other dangerous items or not?
This ordinance is only intended for battery storage.
All right, all right. And then, is there going to be any issue with having it located near the railroad? Because the railroad does go right through there, and do we, have we checked with the federal rules, with regulations with railroads to have, is that a location concern?
That would probably be something that would be a requirement, if the ordinance were implemented, of a checklist of different organizations that they would have to go through to verify. We have not contacted the Union Pacific Railroad.
So it seems like that would be done prior to the, you know, it's finalized, so that we would know if there's going to be any concerns or not. Right.
If that's a council feedback, we can do that.
All right. And then, the other thing is, one of the reasons why my perception that Vacaville is right here on the radar is because our close proximity to the Vaca substation there, but some of them are possibly being located farther out. So is there a concern with transmission lines, or property owners and transmission lines? Is that something that we have to have in our ordinance, or is that something that these potential companies would have to deal with?
We wouldn't, we don't have the level of expertise to determine the type of overhead power, overhead power lines that would be necessary to support these facilities. The Middle River Power Project, the draft example that we saw on that one would have to install heavy transmission lines that would go over Interstate 80. And those types of approvals, they would have to get Caltrans authorization prior to constructing those types of things. So the ordinance, I don't think, is intended to regulate the secondary items, such as overhead power lines, because those things aren't specifically the concern. We've got power lines that are around Vacaville already. It's really intended to regulate these, the electrochemical devices that have the potential to catch fire, and when they're collected in mass on a site, what do we do about those particular scenarios?
And is there any way that we can have companies guarantee some sort of issue? If someone has a problem on their own personal property with the, if they've caused a damage through the thermal runaway, or through some problem, do they would be responsible to the landowners nearby, if they cause damage? But...
We've seen that type of agreement be identified with the ordinance, and I think that our current ordinance obligates them to deal with remediation such.
I think that would be important to include. And then, just for the record, I would like to not have lithium ion, because it seems like that is what has a lot of problems, and we can get some option that's safer for our people and our community, is what would be my preference.
Yeah, and we'll get to that. I'm trying to get to our questions, so that we can hear from the public. Councilmember Fremo.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Albert. You always present very well, and a lot of great facts, so I appreciate your expertise in so many different areas, or at least you, you know, bring it all together really well. I was curious, can you tell me how many letters of support that you received from our community out of the 150 or so?
I could not find any.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. In the draft ordinance section, F, excuse me, E, public benefit agreements, you know, it's talking about applicable to Tier 2 and Tier 3 NFPA ratings, I'd imagine, and then the next is examples could include training and equipment for emergency personnel, investments in local organizations or community projects, contributions to city initiatives, or projects that benefit the community. So I'm just curious, because it sounds like you have a little bit of knowledge, and you had some interaction perhaps with the Moss Landing community, or at least insight to the terrible things that have happened down in that community. And so I'm just, have you heard anything about how excited that that community was about the benefits that they've received about any of this?
I do not know. We can find that out.
Yeah, I'm just curious. And then, you know, going back on the discussion on 649, it says, "While best technology to bolster the grid reliability, lithium battery fires," that some installations have raised legitimate safety concerns in many communities, because these, these facilities can present unique challenges for host communities and first responders. One major concern can present, and I would, I would take out the can and put, will present a unique challenge for host communities and first responders. So I was also just curious, because I know that that was a catastrophic event that went on for a long time down there, on two separate occasions. Are you, are you at all, did you happen to hear any of the fallout from perhaps a lack of manpower and ability from the first responders that were attending to this, and how maybe the rest of the community was neglected as a result of so many resources going in?
I didn't have that level of detail, but I was observant of the amount of work in reporting, publication, and outreach to the community, that extensively has to go on, that some of the burden of testing that stuff is on the utility provider, but a large burden is on the city to communicate to the public, and that is a particular risk that's associated with these types of facilities, if we do have those. We take on responsibility of informing the public and holding these property owners and these facility operators accountable if there is an event.
Yeah. I guess the last thing that I would have is, we're aware of our own need for new fire equipment within our city, and we know how long it's taking to place orders on fire equipment, on training facilities, and other things that would be very important to bring our first responders up to speed to a level of something like this. And just the fact that we're waiting three and four years for new fire trucks and equipment, you know, to undertake something like that, that is going to, examples could include training and equipment for emergency personnel. Have we taken any kind of look at all at what it's going to take to gear up for something like this, of this magnitude, and then, you know, the possible consequences that it's going to cause to our citizens here that may not get appropriate responding, first responders as a result of a catastrophic event that could shut down Interstate 80 and blow right into our neighbors in Dixon? I'm sorry for these.
The drafting of the, the drafting of the ordinance, I'm pretty sure you, has involved the city attorneys, as was our own fire department, in evaluating the potential risks. We spent hand-in-hand efforts reviewing multiple ordinances, drafting it, revising it multiple times. I think what you're probably looking at is a fourth version before it was ever ready. That's because that's the extent of the work that we've been working with our own fire department.
Okay, and finally, just, do you have any idea how long it would take for us to gear up, to get ready for something like this, as far as our first responders go, and the amount of money it would take us to achieve those types of equipment and personnel that to respond to a catastrophic event?
I do not know.
Okay, thank you. Albert, I appreciate you very much.
All right, before I go to Councilmember Ritchie, I just want to, just from what I'm hearing in the form of the questions, and you may not know the answer, but take notes anyway. From a legal perspective, is there any consideration or opportunity to hold not only the, the energy companies responsible, but those who they're contracting for? And I simply use the analogy, like San Francisco, City and County of San Francisco wants to place this right here in our backyard. So does that put some jeopardy on the City and County of San Francisco? Because a third party is an energy company that they would be contracting with, so just consider that as part of a question moving forward. The other is, is obviously, this is an energy distribution center, and a peak power plant for Vaca Dixon is very important. Since there's been incidents at Moss Landing, has there been consideration or a question asked by the power company there, as far as how much did it disrupt their ability to service energy within the community? That question is based on the fact that if you place battery storage at that capacity right next to the Vaca Dixon substation, do we jeopardize the fact that no one can go in there and work and manage that? And we're, not only us, but others are responsible for where we're getting our power from. And so, has anybody looked at that particular threat, because you're co-locating the risk right next to it, versus if it was put somewhere out remotely where you can contain it without disrupting the distribution system in California? So that's, that ties those questions together with what I'm hearing from the council. And then, Councilmember Ritchie.
Can I add one more to that?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
What happens if the company goes defunct?
Yeah.
To where they can't pay for damage?
These legal questions are all good. Yeah. Councilmember Ritchie.
I'll be very quick. My, no, I want to question, there's more complaints, comments, probably will echo a lot.
We're going to keep the comments out. So any thoughts about your feelings about it?
My thoughts, my thoughts and feelings regards to the, you know...
Questions only here.
Yeah, they overstepped the local county, then the Senate bill. The last thing that Albert read was community benefit. I have not heard one thing that can establish a causal community benefit, just only risks. Due to the fact, like, San Francisco's is just window dressing. They send their garbage to our dump, just so they can claim they have a zero emission city, a clean city. It's all BS. Then they're going to basically put power, but also in jeopardy, to send power down to San Francisco. I think the terminology is very vague on what community is. Is it the community that's placed in, or the community of Northern California? So I think, like, we need to, Mitch and I had a very high-class meeting in a Walmart.
Councilmember Ritchie, what I'm going to ask you to do, it's nothing personal, I want to save our comments...
Okay.
When we come back.
So I'll go back to Walmart when I come back.
Yeah, I'll remind you of your, of your story. I just want to get to the questions. City manager?
Yes, so we have our Assistant City Attorney Annie Brenham. She can talk a little bit about the interplay between the Assembly Bill 205, as well as the local control and local ordinances.
If she can answer that now, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you for catching that.
Some research on my phone here, so pardon if I am reading from it. So I think there, having also been staffing the planning commission meeting, where we had a study session on this last month, I heard, you know, questions, I think probably we've received, questions in email, about why not consider a more, a permanent ban on the facilities altogether? I think that's not necessarily something that we are saying is off the table for your consideration. The reason we went with the regulatory ordinance approach is because under 205, the CEC has to at least consider any local rules and policies that are in place, and they have to actually make a finding that the proposed facility is in compliance with the local rules, although they can decide to make an overriding determination that they want to approve the facility despite the local rules. I think the threshold determination there is supposed to be that they're looking for compliance, although they leave themselves that out, to say, "We're going to go ahead and approve it regardless." But the reason for taking the approach of establishing regulations that work for the city ultimately, is to give the CEC a framework that says, "This is what the city wants, this is what our city would prefer." Whether the CEC listens or not, I think is a different subject, but by giving them nothing, and just saying, "We ban them outright," and then if a 205 project comes in, then they have no restraints on what they're looking at for the rules of the city where the project will be cited. So I just wanted to raise that, I think we got that question, why not just ban them? We could, it won't affect the... It won't affect the 205 projects anyway. So if there are any other questions I can say, but just wanted to add that context.
Councilmember Stockton?
Thank you. I know we've talked a lot about barrier distances and I'm assuming the sequel will include plume modeling with weather patterns and stuff like that, but I don't think we're talking enough about water. I know that we recently had to spend a ton of money and tax our community, a significant amount of money in their water rate as a result of removing the hexagon chromium six. There are reports that are out there regarding heavy metals being located in water, you know, in, in the ground, in groundwater. Is the CEC considering some of those contaminants in their process? Because there's no buffer for that. If something catches on fire, particles are going to go everywhere. If it's raining, it's going to come down. It's not just a firefighter putting water on, on, you know, on a fire. So is the CEC considering some of the heavy metal and some of the toxic chemicals that are seeping into the, into the earth and into our, our water?
Yes, well, I'll say, when, when done correctly, that is what the sequel process is supposed to account for. We're in, to some extent, in a bit of uncharted territory here. I think there have not been a lot of these facilities. I think, of course, we've heard of the ones that have gone catastrophically wrong. I think the CEC likely is aware of the public sentiment around that. So ideally, the sequel process would be robust. It will look at those attenuated factors as well as the direct immediate factors that go into whether the project should be, you know, permitted from an environmental standpoint. But as far as what the city's role in that is, we can provide comments to the CEC. We can tell them what our concerns are. We can give them, you know, a, a set of regulations that we've adopted through our ordinances to try to get at those root issues, but we are otherwise limited in what the city's involvement is, although we of course will involve ourselves as much as we can in that 205 process.
Okay. And then another CEC question. I recognize that the board members or the commission appointees are all appointed by the governor, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That's yes, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so that being said, is there a legal methodology for voters to be able to alter that process?
Not that I'm aware of, except the governor's office itself and, you know, submitting, of course, you can always submit comment letters indicating unhappiness with the way that the CEC is engaging in its business, with the regulations themselves, with the state law itself. I, I heard that there's interest in taking this to our lobbyists and our legislative platform. So I think we, we as staff will take all that into consideration as well, but that's, you know, we are insulated from the appointed bodies and to, you know, to that extent.
And the voters are as well, is what you're saying?
Yep. The governor appoints, and so the theory, I think, is that we elect the governor, he appoints. And so to contradict that is to feel differently about how you vote for the governor position. If that's, I don't mean to be roundabout, but really the answer is no, we don't directly have a say in that.
You answered my question. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. I'm going to open this up to the public, but here's how I would like to do this. Initially, a lot of you have been in communication with the organized group, which I do believe we heard comments that this has really helped educate the community. It's helped educate this council as we went through a process before, so it's not new to us. We had a very large meeting where we had discussed an exclusive negotiating rights agreement with city owned property. And we learned a lot from it. And the takeaway was, let's put a moratorium on it. Let's study it. Let's contract it. And this, I believe, is good governance, doing it right and well. And I, and again, I don't want to put words in all the council, but I, I believe that there's a strong belief that the level of organization has been reasonable to understand what is good and what is possible. And so I want to start with a short presentation. Sarah, are you prepared? And then after you, then I know that we'll open it up for public comment. And then I'll also explain a little bit more about how I want that to go. Is there a, a short presentation or is there? Oh, you don't? Okay, that's fine. That's fine. And the, I'm, I'm going to give you some extra time. And the hope is, is that for some of you that feel compelled to be here to speak, if, if what is being coordinated resonates, I'm not looking for everyone to repeat to say the same thing. We'll be here all night and we have a long agenda. But if it resonates, again, this is not about clapping. This is about hearing and we're listening. This is why it's a study session. And so I appreciate the work that's been done and the, this is what organization looks like. So, good evening.
Thank you. Thank you so much for giving me that little bit of extra time to convey the community concerns. Keep Vacaville Safe is a community group. We're about 1,500 people strong and many of us are here in the audience today. But our main concern is safety and we're not against battery storage in general. Our only concern is the safety of our Vacaville residents here and our businesses. So, good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I appreciate the city's proactive approach, implementing the moratorium and creating a draft ordinance that could safely allow best and appropriate locations. However, I do feel that the current draft fails to achieve our moratorium's goal and it does not protect the health and welfare of our community. In the short time that the city has put this moratorium into place, a little over a year and a half ago, there's already been 19 large scale lithium ion best fires, nine of which were in the USA. The most catastrophic being the recent Moss Landing best fire that happened in January. And by the way, that was the fourth fire for that community, the third fire at that facility. The other fire was an outdoor container style facility. So those are not immune to these incidences as well. A new data has been put forth in a scientific paper performed by field research scientists that prove that the battery fire fallout and smoke carried nanoparticles containing heavy metals. And that's something not previously studied or tested when these fires occur. And there's so, still so much to learn about the health and environmental impacts surrounding these fires. Since there's no 100% effective extinguishing method for lithium ion fires, I urge the city to exercise caution. A best fire could spread toxic breathable dust throughout our community. Permitting these systems locally means the city accepts these inherent unmitigated health risks and smoke doesn't know setbacks. I struggle to find where these systems, especially those with lithium ion batteries, could be safely located in our community. The county's new best ordinance identified remote locations that are already zoned industrial and manufacturing. And these are far from populated areas and far from Vacaville's city limits. Unlike the county, we simply just do not have remote locations far enough away from homes, schools and businesses inside our city. It doesn't make sense for the county to keep best away from our city if our city allows it inside. Regarding the three locations identified by city staff, we feel none are appropriate. According to state law, before constructing a new school, districts must assess health risks from any nearby sources of hazardous air pollutants within a quarter mile radius and consult with the necessary regulatory agencies. Since the new Kairos High School was already approved by the city and under construction, the location near Brighton Landing should not be considered. The best facility was not part of that discussion when that was approved. The location near Elmira presents some risks to the nearby railway corridor that could potentially be shut down due to hazmat conditions if a fire occurs, and that has historically happened in other locations. And also, the nearby water treatment facility would be at risk of contamination or being shut down for an undetermined amount of time. We just don't have the right locations for these in our city. The alternative location near North Village neighborhood was already previously considered and voted down by the city council for a best project due to multiple concerns, including safety issues near our residents. If anything, this review demonstrates there are no appropriate locations for lithium ion vests anywhere in the city. Additionally, allowing lithium vests anywhere in our city may result in setting a precedent that the state could follow, and it could lead to a cascade of similar projects that could compound and endanger our community. The core issue really is thermal runaway fires. It's not energy storage. And in my opinion, lithium ion is soon going to be replaced and it's going to become outdated. It has too many inherent risks. It doesn't solve enough of the energy storage problem. It typically only provides about four hours of power. With the addition of electric vehicles and data centers that are going to need substantially more power, these four hour systems are soon going to be obsolete. Why should Vacaville settle for less when there's better options? There are other commercially available, non-flammable technologies that can offer eight to 100 hours of power per charge, most without the fire and toxic gas risks. We have provided the list of viable technology to the city staff, and I've also provided a list of 45 non-flammable best projects that are currently in operation or plan to be built right now in the USA. So please revise the ordinance to prohibit best capable of thermal runaway while encouraging safer, non-flammable alternatives. Adopting an ordinance with safety-based battery chemistry requirements would not only protect our community from potential risks, but it gives our city some leverage with the state to try and enforce our safety standards. It is possible to meet California's energy transition demands while upholding public safety. This approach is fair and it allows best to exist in our city, but in a way that prioritizes the well-being of our community. Let Vacaville be the leader and set an example of how to do things right. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. So, so real quick, a show of hands, how many of you are represented by this group from this message that was just here? Okay. But that's, that's, that's fine. That's fine. The reason is, is because, the reason I say this is simply this, is I'm going to give you all your, your opportunity to speak. What I would ask though, if it resonated with you, if it's simply, I'm just reiterating what she said, we'll be here till midnight, but I won't take your time away. But if you choose to, if you're just repeating something, I may ask you to try and provide something that's new and unique because I'd, we'd rather hear something else that you would offer if you do choose to speak, okay? And then the other thing I would ask is this, this really isn't going to be a time for clapping. I think most of you are probably united in what you're going to say. But with that, I will go ahead and open it up to the audience to speak. And I know that we've got a gentleman standing next who can start us off. Many of you might know him. He's Supervisor Mitch Mashburn and the Chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your time. Thank you, council, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I want to first applaud you for getting ahead of this and getting in front of it. Our county's going through it right now. We are in the process of having the state cram one of those bitter pills right down our throat, right out off of Kilkenny Road, as you heard earlier. And the impacts that the county has studied are significant with lithium ion. To that end, as the supervisor of the fifth district, which encompasses two of your districts within the city of Vacaville and many of your residents, I'm here to speak officially on that and say that I have concerns because we're just talking about concerns right now. Those two locations that we talked about that are on that side, the east side of Vacaville, one adjacent to Brighton Landing and the little town of Elmira, presents an issue, a big issue, if we have a thermal runaway, not necessarily because of fire, but because of the plume. And the same for the site out at the sewer treatment plant. Now, we just talked earlier about the significance of the possibility of having to shut down the power to the area if the plant over here wasn't able to have workers at, at the power plant. Imagine how the residents of Vacaville would feel if we had to shut down, like Moss Landing, the sewer treatment plant for a week, where we process millions of gallons of effluent every day. A couple of days of not being able to flush your toilet and our residents are going to be awfully upset. That said, I'd like to take, also take a couple of minutes to share with you some lessons learned from the county. One of them is when we talk about community benefit, the organization that went around us to the state, the way they were able to do that and check that box on community benefit is that they found a nonprofit. And it's perfectly legal for them to do that. And it can be any nonprofit, any 503(c) in your city and say, hey, we got a couple of bucks for you. Doesn't have to be a million, doesn't have to be 10,000. It doesn't have to be a specific amount. It just has to be that they gave some nonprofit within your city, some funding, and there's your community benefit. And that box is checked. And your community will not realize any benefit, but it will have to deal with the ramifications of that. And then lastly, one of the things that I wanted to point out is, again, the county studied all of this. We're providing 39 sites within the county in rural areas that have no impact or very little impact if this type of plant is what they truly intend to put in lithium ion. There are, as was stated before, other technologies out there that are better and that are safer and that would be better suited to a urban area like the city. Last piece, and this is a piece that in looking at the map, I really don't really understand, and I would like to have staff look at and explain. We have said in the county that those areas that are best suited for this is the industrial areas, right? Lambie Industrial Park, our northern Dixon industrial area. But in Vacaville, we're going to exclude the industrial areas. And we're going to place it right next to a residential area. From the perspective of public safety, it's easier to shut down and/or evacuate for a couple of days, an industrial area. And you have innumerable of them in your city. It is incredibly difficult to evacuate Leisure Town. It is incredibly difficult to evacuate South Town and to keep those places evacuated for multiple days. And the impacts of those residents are significant. So I would urge staff to give it a second look when we talk about industrial areas in the city and the possibility of placing any best plant, whether it be the lithium ion or the iron sulfide batteries, and look at how we could place those in an industrial area to at least give you some breathing space to be able to contain and/or evacuate and have the least amount of impact to your residents. With that, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this today to you. I appreciate it very much.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm here tonight in my capacity as Chairman of the Solana County GOP, representing that organization. And while we are here to show solidarity and stand with Keep Vacaville Safe, we also have other concerns that we're more primarily focused on, and many of you brought them up tonight. So in addition to all the safety concerns that have been mentioned, for us, the SB 203 order that has been pushed against the city to this, that's a red line in the sand. So we encourage you to push back as hard as you can, any way you can, against that order, and to enlist us to help you do that. Because if you allow this to happen without a fight, the state will continue to push these things on you. And before you know it, you will not run this city, the state will run this city. More to that point, the governor-appointed individuals will run, from the state will run the city. Thank you for your time and God bless.
Thank you.
I want to thank the lady that spoke first. Her efforts are very well recognized and noticed, and it's because of her that I'm even aware of this, which leads me to my next thing. So a little bit of feedback, I'm just wondering if there's a way we could get the communication better. I, I never received any direct communication in regards to this from the city of Vacaville. I only know about this because of the flyer she took the time to print up and press up. So really thank her for that. So 300 feet, that's the number that sticks out to me because the report from Moss Landing was just updated last week. And the radius of research that they found is exactly 300 acres. So to put that in a visual, that would be like Kaiser Hospital to Nut Tree Browns Valley Plaza. There's a lot of different things in between that time zone, I mean, between that distance. So if something bad was to happen, we're talking about what happens when that particular site.
300 feet?
Yeah.
55,000 pounds of heavy metal?
Yeah, so the guy backed me up there. Thank you. So, but just to put that in context, so we're talking about the explosion of the actual facility itself, the best facility. But what happens when that explosion connects to the Chevron gas station that was just built in front of the Play For All Park? So now the Play For All Park that we did such a, you guys, you know, did such a great job of including all the kids, no matter what their condition or disability is, everybody has a place to take their family there. Now you're surrounded by Chevron gas station and then right behind it, a possible storage facility. Now you have a flammable and a combustible within that radius. So I think that should be considered. Another thing I heard is a lot of community talk, but I want to talk about family. We have a beautiful outlet that's been there for a long time and families from all over come to shop there. So that, not only does that impact our communities, that impacts multiple families just from the state in general. I know a lot of people that always go, oh, you live in Vacaville? Oh, I come there all the time to shop at outlets. That's the only thing they know us for. But they bring their family here to come shop, they eat, it's business to our city and it's a great thing. So I just, you know, hope you, just wanted to create that visual, the distance of what we're talking about here and there's more impact than just the actual facility exploding itself. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members and staff. Thank you so much for everything that you've done for us thus far. We've gone through the Minar deal, and you were there for us, so we appreciate it. Let me begin by a straightforward question. Is the safety of Vacaville residents truly your highest priority? If the answer is yes, then we have to look honestly at what has already happened in other communities that allowed lithium ion BES facilities near homes, schools, and businesses. Escondido, a BES fire last year forced the evacuation of 500 businesses and three schools. The industry called it a success because no one was injured. Their city council disagreed and immediately imposed a moratorium. Moss Landing, in January, the world's largest BES facility caught fire again, one of multiple incidents, incidents at that location. More than 1,200 people were evacuated, Highway 1 shut down, local businesses closed, and toxic heavy metals were later detected in surrounding wetlands and soil. Monterey County has a moratorium in process after four fires in five years. These are not hypotheticals, these are real consequences of California communities having already faced. And months later, the exact cause of the Moss Landing fire is still unknown, yet Monterey County Supervisor Glenn Church stated he was still promised by the energy company, after the fourth fire, it would never happen again. After every one of these incidents, the company issued the same scripted PR, PR line, "Our top priority is the safety of the community and our personnel." You know what? I call BS on these companies' priorities. Because the line never becomes before disaster, it only shows up after residents have already been harmed, evacuated, and put at risk. We've all heard that line before. PG&E said, "Safety is our top priority," after their equipment caused deadly wildfires. Boeing said it after 737 MAX crashes, killing 346 people. Those statements come after damage was done, not before. Real safety leadership is proven before catastrophic, never after, before catastrophic, not after it. And here's one thing that is not political and not up to debate. No major U.S. Safety Authority, NFPA, UL, or the Department of Energy recommends placing utility-scale lithium ion BES facilities next to homes or agricultural land, not one. So tonight, you have a clear choice. Take action now while you still have the opportunity to prevent that outcome here. Vacaville can lead, not by opposing clean energy, but by ensuring its site is appropriate in industrial zones. Protect Vacaville, and before a disaster, not apologize after one. Vacaville should not be the next community forced to learn these lessons the hard way. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jason Hatcher. I'm a nurse at Kaiser. My wife is as well. I've worked in chemical decontamination, cleaning patients coming in from the field and fires and chemical issues with that. I've worked in the burn ICU unit. I've seen the horrific things that can happen with that. I moved here with a, and now have a three and a four-year-old son, and I want to protect them and have them grow up in a great environment here, and I'm concerned for thermal runways, especially in a high-wind environment that we have. I worked at Kaiser Vacaville during COVID. We ran out of ventilators in, you know, an emergency event, especially with a lot of toxic smoke. There's going to be a lot of inhalation burns, especially in a high-wind situation, especially so close next to original houses, schools, especially with Kyros over there being in the vicinity there in your district, Mr. Reggie. And, you know, it's a very, very high concern for me. I mean, it's enough that, you know, I would definitely pack up my family and move if I know that there was going to be a lithium ion battery right next to my house, which I live there in Brighton Landing, and that would be right next to my house. So I've seen that firsthand. I've seen patients die from inhalation burns. I've seen them, their flesh melted off into flames. You know, there's not going to be a good emergency evacuation in those plan proposals. I think, you know, having those into an area where they're safe, away from the general public, is definitely going to be the best thing, and especially just preventing any type of, you know, possible thermal, you know, burn-off situation there would be the best thing in that ordinance. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello, good evening. I'm Wendy Brecken, and first off, I want to thank you for dealing with this issue. It's really crazy what, what you're being forced to do by the state right now, which is ordinarily, I've never seen this before. Ordinarily, you would be looking at local zoning standards and best practices and what makes sense, what's common sense for this kind of thing, you know, where's our industrial areas, not thinking about creating new industrial areas, and maybe causing, as the gentleman before me just talked about, chemical burns. One of the chemicals that is released in the thermal runway, it was actually a chemical that was used in World War I to kill people. So I don't know how far away, you know, when this thing is emitted, how far away you have to be to get that level of burning, but anyway, the reason why I wanted to talk to you is because the big picture is that, you know, your job is almost spiritual, I see, where you're trying to, to bring our community along, you know, bring forward things that will bring success to the community and prevent blight and harm to the community, at the same time deal with all the new laws. So I, one gentleman mentioned, this is a fight, it's a fight, where all's we can do is make the best determination using best practices and the knowledge to prevent harm to the community, and when, if the CEC, I'm sorry, if the energy company is not pleased by your ordinance, then if they go to the CEC, then deal with it there. And it means, you know, as the attorney said, staying with it and making comments, and then maybe after a decision is made, dealing with it. So if, I came here to start talking about setbacks and things like that, but I agree with Mr. Mashburn that we should just be looking at this kind of thing, this best facilities in industrial areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Natalie Kuzma, and I am a resident of Vacaville. Tonight, I just wanted to ask the City Council to converse with the city attorney regarding the legal challenges that the city of Vacaville can bring against SB 254 and AB 305. The whole argument for the potential ordinance allowing BES inside the city limits has been that because the CEC can put them anywhere, why don't we tell them where they should be? But this argument is based on what could be a complete fallacy. SB 254 has never been legally challenged. As our own city attorney said tonight, we're in uncharted territory here. There are many legal challenges that can and should be made to these legislations. They conflict with the California Constitution. They violate the separation of powers. As evidence of this, I ask you not just to believe me, but to believe, refer to other cities in California who are also banning BES within their cities. That would include the city of San Juan, Capistrano, the city of Escondido, Moss Landing, Orange County, and Shasta County has also objected to the CEC jurisdiction under AB 205. So I would urge the city attorney to have a meeting of the minds with these other small cities, coincidence, they're all small cities, and have a meeting of the minds, what are your strategies? If you're fighting this in your city limits, what can we do? Can we bind together? City of San Juan, Capistrano filed a 15-page memo in objecting to the CEC's jurisdiction. Can we, can we read that? Can we take some of those arguments and apply them to our own legislation should we be challenged under the CEC? I would just end with, just because the governor signed it into law does not make it legal. And please do not make a premature decision, as we cannot unring the bell. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name's Kathy Farkas, and I'm a resident of Vacaville over in the Arrogs area. So these locations are fairly close to where I live. One, subtle, you don't hear it very often, but that is a concern over in that area, and so I'm just asking if it's something that can be studied, because I haven't heard of any of that kind of study being done on this, in this matter. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. I really appreciate the opportunity to come, you know, at this dialogue. I have two really, just two comments. Firewater, it's, it's really imperative that you have enough firewater. You can't really put these fires out. So what, they've changed the design of them. They used to stack them all up. Now what they've done is they, they spread them out, and the concept behind that, if one catches fire, what you can do is put water on the ones around it. You can't put that one out. What you're trying to do is control the exposures to the others. So if you have one that goes, you have five or six that you have to put 1,000 gallons a minute on. Where are you going to get 6,000 gallons a minute? 24 hours, that's 7 million gallons. On the ground, that's 24 acres a foot deep. How do you deal with that? You have to have water infrastructure. You have to. Five engines, minimum, to do that. You know, it's expensive, so you end up having to have these groups come in, mutual aid. And you have to have a mutual aid agreement. You have to have the equipment available, and it has to be able to respond in a timely manner, or it catastrophically burns all the ones around it. So that's, that's a real big concern. The other thing, which seems odd to me, if you take the Weber exit, go down to Lewis, turn left, which is, you know, just, just quarter mile away from the one site that they're going to place Barnes and Kelly, Kenny? If you look out, going down, going down Lewis, look back over to the industrial laydown yard that was approved last year, they're staging them there. They're already there. Just go look. So this might all be mute. Anyway, my two comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, yeah, anyone who is still wanting to speak, go ahead, and you can actually start lining up in the, in the aisle, so just for the expediency of time, and appreciate it. So, good evening.
My name is Michelle Keem, and I'm a resident here in Vacaville. I share the same concerns as everyone else regarding both the immediate and long-term risks and consequences of these facilities, but as you said, Mayor, I don't need to get into rehashing all of that. So instead, I wanted to thank all of you here on the council for asking tonight a variety of detailed and thoughtful questions as this process goes on. Thank you for hearing and sharing our concerns, and I hope that you will continue to insist on answers to all of those concerns on behalf of all of us. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Shelley Dally, and I'm from Elmira, and so I want to talk about our little town. I really thank Mr. Mashburn for talking about the sewer plant. Hello, Sarah. Long time. Talking about the sewer plant, because that's a big concern to me, because I've taken tours with kids over there, and there's chemicals already there, exposing more, more danger chemicals in the area seems absolutely nuts. Plus, I don't know how many of you are aware, but we had the Wix plant in Elmira, which became a superfund site, because they had so much arsenic and other things leaching into the soils that when I worked at Elmira School, green slime ran down through the, adjacent to the school, and we had to shut down the water at the school. So that superfund site is sealed, but it still exists. We also had the railroad pipeline with the oil in it spill into our place, so that we all had to get our own, get on a group well. We had to abandon our own, our own wells unless we were going to use them for landscape. So we also have the sewer plant in our town, and then we have the train that runs through. So Elmira is very impacted for a very small town with all kinds of issues, and to add something like that out there, I think, you know, the 60 or so house, people, people in houses that live there, we'll all fall apart. So I said to talk about something different. The emotional state of the people in Elmira, I do not believe could handle one more thing that was going to attack us, in addition to the pesticides that we get from all the agriculture that surrounds our little town. Thank you very much for considering that.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening.
My name is Kenny Walker. I'm a resident of Vacaville since 2013, and I want to say to Mayor Carley, Vice Mayor, and all of you councilpeople here today, appreciate you being here, and I appreciate the fact that you ask questions. That tells me that you actually care. I appreciate that. I wanted to share with you today some facts that'll help you in your fight with the state to stop this from happening. I've been studying lithium ion batteries for about six years now, and you have one of the finest fire departments in California, but that same fire department is in opposition to this. And the reason that they are, because as of 8:00 AM this morning, there's no known process known to man or woman to put out thermal runaway. You can take one of those batteries and drop it in the ocean, it's still going to burn. It's still going to burn, no matter what. And, and the other things that, I think it was Councilman Stockton, you asked earlier about, was there more than one incident in Monterey? The answer is yes and no, and I'll tell you why. No, because there was just one single incident, but no, because what happened was those batteries that burnt out, two months later, they reignited. They can do this. They can do that up to six months of reignition. There was a question asked about technology, is it advancing? And Albert, I hope some of this stuff that I'm sharing with you, that you might put in your next presentation, so folks to know everything they need to know. But there is no new technology for the past six years. They, they moved the chemicals around a bit, but it's always the same thing. You got cobalt, you got nickel, you got lithium ion. There's no real new technology, okay? There was a question about the benefits to the community. Well, there was a study just released on December 2nd, where it was shared the benefits to the community of the Moss Landing fire. The finding was that they received 55,000 pounds of toxic chemicals deposited within one mile of the plant. And we're talking about putting one of these things next to a community. When did it ever make sense to recommend that we put something like that next to a residential area? Does that make sense to anybody? I hope not. Those metals that were found were nickel, which is a carcinogenic, cobalt, which is a carcinogenic, and neurotoxin, meaning, messes with this up here. Magnesium, same thing, it's a neurotoxin. And this is what the citizens of Moss Landing got. The concentrations, what they found as of December 2nd, that it was 100 to 100, excuse me, from 100 to 1,000 times higher than normal in nearby marshes, the metal concentrations. The estimated total release from this plume was 2.2 to 3 million pounds of burned battery materials into smoke plumes.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. If, I mean, I'm also going to encourage you, if you get cut off on your time, go ahead, and if you've already submitted your information, know that this process is not over. This is just a study session. So there's, there's more opportunity for any of you to continue to, with your message to the council, so thank you.
Well, thank you for that. And I would like to say also that it impacted not only Monterey, Santa Cruz, San Bernardino, and Santa Clara Counties.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a nice day.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Ralph Mullenbrooke, and I am a resident of the North Village neighborhood. I'm actually going to cut my comments very short. more opportunity for any of you to continue to, with your message to the council. So thank you.
Well, thank you for that. And we'd like to say also that it impacted not only Monterey, Santa Cruz, San Benito, and Santa Clara County affected.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a nice day.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ralph Mullenbrook, and I am a resident of the North Village neighborhood. I'm actually going to cut my comments very short, because much of what I was going to say has already been said. But I want to deal in specificity. We've made some obtuse comments about a, a study where these numbers have been coming from. That study was from the San Jose State University Moss Landing Marine Laboratories that studied the effects of the aftermath of that January 2025 fire at the Moss Landing BES facility. It's, they covered an area of approximately 300 acres, primarily the estuary that, that is around the Moss Landing facility. But as mentioned previously, their soil samples that were taken likely only accounted for about 2% of the total heavy metals the blaze burned, suggesting that the vast majority spread elsewhere in the region, not measured in feet, but in miles, tens of miles. So I encourage the council to thoroughly research the effects these facilities can have on a neighbor and on to the community. And I would also think it would make sense that since the county of Solano has already created an ordinance after doing some deep research, that perhaps the city should have some sort of a liaison with the county and explore what they have have already done. There's no sense in reinventing the wheel. And then that would create a coordinated effort between the county and the city in which we can confront the state. And we keep hearing comments about perceived or real threats to democracy. AB 205 is the threat to democracy. How the state, unelected commission members can overturn the will of the people. That is the threat to democracy, and our city should stand up to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Been a minute since I've been up here. A lot of familiar faces, some new faces. Hi, oh, I'm Pam. Quit laughing. I'm here just to, okay, Solano Irrigation District just kind of muffed the Kilkeny, Kilkeny and Burns, something to do with their drop lines, or the lines that they had to dig, and I guess that they put through two, Corby put through two plans, and it was denied by Solano Irrigation. And they actually sent a letter, the attorney sent a letter, cancellation or whatever, to the CEC in regards to that. Even said that they never even allowed Corby on the property, or Corby on the property. So my question with all that is, I would like SID to evaluate all of these particular areas. Vacaville is nothing but wells and canals. So if it can't be put in there, we're, can it be in it if it's lithium ion, if it's the danger, you know? Oh my goodness. Is there a law that says we have to allow it here? I know there's bills, but is there a law? And what if the CEC says, yes, you have to put lithium ion around the corner from that hospital? Why do we have to do it if it's not a law? Are they going to throw us all in jail? What, what is the city of Vacaville going to lose if they say, no, we don't want lithium ion in our city limits? It should be industrial only. It's already proven to you that you've got a bunch of backers that are going to back you up. And go to Sacramento, that was mentioned before about the SB 254. You've got the backers. You've got the commitment. The retiring attorney, thank you, said that Vacaville, and I'm not going to quote, but was just the greatest little town. It, it was, you know, we want it to remain that way. When I moved to Vacaville, I brought three generations with me, my father, myself, and my daughter. And now I have two grandchildren. Mayor Carley, he likes you quite a bit. Mr. Brody shook your hand, remember? Okay. And I, I want, I want Vacaville to remain the same. I don't, I'm not against the storage, but come on, folks. I mean, Corby was really dumb to buy 40 acres in front of a Victorian home. So what does that tell you? And my time's up. Good seeing you guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Rosie, I've lived in Vacaville for 20 years.
You can pull the microphone down. There you go.
The chemicals that that gentleman was talking about, they are known to cause various types of cancers, respiratory distress and/or failure, kidney failure, birth defects, learning disabilities, et cetera. The Monterey County Community Health Survey was just released, and the people there reported that symptoms began within a four-day window, starting immediately after the first fire. There are several symptoms, but the ones that stand out the most to me are shortness of breath and difficulty breathing, chest pain and chest tightness, and the list goes on. They claimed that the symptoms lasted seven to 35 days. It also stated that children 12 and under had the highest percentage of reported symptoms. Knowing all of this, and the fact that Corby is continuing to insist on placing these battery sites so close to our home schools and hospitals, shows clear intent to harm and negligence on their part, and the CEC for approving these applications. We need your help to protect our health and the health of our children, and we also need your help to protect our agricultural land from contamination. We have a ban on plastic bags, but what we really need is a ban on lithium ion batteries. So please, please put a ban in place and help us save our beautiful city, our families, our health, and our way of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
I'm cutting out, like, everything I've written because I agree with everything that has been said. But the big thing you need to know is, poor decisions get made out of fear. And I'm not talking healthy fear. I'm talking about fear of what someone's going to do to you. Okay? Every time I come to here, I hear all this stuff that the state is making us do this. You've had people come, and they're like, you're going to put a four-story apartment building right up to their backyard because the state is going to make you do that, and you know, it's ridiculous. We know that putting a BES facility anywhere in Vacaville is absolutely ludicrous. So I suggest what you really start doing is writing a strong ordinance that says no to these BES systems. You start building your alliances, because people are fed up across the state and in other places across the nation. There are attorney groups out there that battle the state and everything else. You start looking into which ones are willing to help you. And you take, and you get a backbone. Okay? Because we shouldn't have to come and fight you guys to do what you know is right, because you're scared of the bullies up there that aren't elected. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Carley, Vice Mayor Chapin, members of the city council and staff. I only have two points tonight. I already provided my red lines to the ordinance. So one point I did want to emphasize is the ordinance mentions a reference to front of the meter and back of the meter. This is one of those things where I think it doesn't matter whether it's front of the meter or behind the meter, the ordinance should apply to both. And then I also want to present to city council just some maps that, that were made. This kind of puts everything into perspective of all the things that folk have been talking about when they say the battery is located here or there. The city map was a little bit hard to read, but I was able to just make a few points here, just, just off Google. But you can actually see where things are in perspective to communities, roads, where, where the blue boxes of proposed areas would be. So I made one for the south area, and then this one is for the north area. So it's for city councils' use. They've been emailed to the city clerk, so.
Shall we have those then?
Yeah, it's been emailed to both of, to the city clerk.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. As a resident of Vacaville, I am one of thousands of residents who are totally against any lithium ion storage facility in Vacaville. I know because I spent my summer at the farmers markets and other public events, talking to the public. I saw the suggested areas on your map, and I'm 100% sure they are too close to homes, people, schools, and more. The county has designated a spot that would be much safer. It is miles away from people, animals, and egg land. I feel you should duplicate the county's ordinance. We need this ordinance in place so it can be factored into the state's decision. The Corby facility is less than a mile from my house. And the Middle River one is less than 1,000 feet from my house. If you let one facility in, they will keep coming. They are unsafe. You speak for the citizens of Vacaville, so stand up for us and deny these facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I was going to talk about how the fact that our city firefighters had sent a letter to the, to the state commission saying that, hey, we don't have the facilities or the methods to put out fires in one of these places. But everybody else has already covered that type of stuff. It's obvious from the questions that you ladies and gentlemen were asking earlier of the city staff, that you're not very warm to this idea. And I don't think that the city staff really believes that putting flammable chemical waste dumps right near to our city is in any way, shape, or form a good idea. And so reiterating what I've heard several people already say, that other lady back there just recently, very eloquently, let's fight them. You want to unite this, you want to do one thing that I believe that 95% of the people in Vacaville will be 100%, you know, ready to back you on, be ready to go to court. That bunch of corrupt SOBs in Sacramento is shoving this down our throats. We don't need this. It's stupid. These things are way expensive, and they don't work. They're only good for four hours. What good is that? If you need to, if you need electricity, you build a peak power plant, you can run the darn thing for days. The whole idea of battery storage at utility scale is a big lie, and it's just a bunch of corrupt government garbage. Fight Sacramento.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Dee Cole, and I am actually a Solano County resident for my entire life, Vacaville since 1979, and most currently at 5405 Kilkeny Road. So if that sounds familiar, the Corby project is definitely near and dear to my heart. It's right across the street. It's my front yard. So I just wanted to bring up two topics that really hadn't been talked about. I mean, they had a little bit, but I just want to reiterate it. Safety obviously is our number one concern, because it's, that in, in our situation is, you know, we, my family is my most important concern. But also financially, I think we really need to focus on that, because we've done some research. And we will probably lose our insurance should that go in. And I know this has nothing to do with the Corby project tonight, but it, the best, it is the best project. But within a half a mile radius of that, we could lose, or it could be very hard for us to get insurance, very costly, I should say. So not only the insurance side of things, but also financially, you know, the, the investment that we've put into our property and any other residents. We're looking at the city of Vacaville here and their residents, but we want to protect them, not only their safety, but financially for them. A lot of people, their, their home is their investment for life and their future. So our property values are going to decrease, and that's going to happen to the people that, in the city of Vacaville as well. So I just want to bring up those two topics. And thank you so much for all the work, because it does sound like we're not real thrilled about this. So we keep working towards banning these. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Cargo pilot. I've lived here in Vacaville for about 15 years. I'm just going to try and put some things in perspective on size-wise. This little device, you've all seen the little, the videos on TV, on the stuff, this burning in an airplane. We've lost a cargo airplane for non-declared lithium batteries. Pilots probably died within the first 15 minutes before it crashed. This little device takes about two gallons of water to, just to put, to stop the thermal runaway, this little device. We're talking gallons. And so we've got to, if we're going to do anything, we've got to force the people that are doing this stuff to provide the, the water, the way to stop fires, pay for the fire departments to provide the, the support. I mean, you think about just a car fire, the car fires now, it's so much more dangerous for our guys to put out a lithium battery fire. I'm just kind of, it's just, just this little perspective of how dangerous this thing is, that do you know, you can't, none of you guys can go fly, but with me, with all those lithium batteries? It's only your personal devices that you can take on an airplane. Nothing in the back, they carry bags as cargo of other stuff. You cannot put it on a passenger airplane. That's how dangerous these devices are. One last little thought. Think of the Altadena fire, how long it took to clean up that area. Just a couple lithium batter, the electric cars, not a lot of them there. All the, all the pollutions that that whole area was. And that's just generic house fire and a few of those cars. So it's, it's going to reach a large area of stuff, if something ever would happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Okay. Mike Geller, I live on Kilkeny Road. I'm blessed with being able to fight this fight on two different fronts. Kilkeny Road runs east and west, due east and west. And Corby is on the eastern side of it, in the county. And Mid River is on the western end of Kilkeny, and it is within your jurisdiction. I'm going to disagree with a couple of people as much as I agree with them about AB 205. We need an ordinance, because if we don't have one, it's not going to look good with the state. And they could very well override us. My suggestion is take all that you've heard tonight. Make it as tight as possible. At least we have an ordinance, and, and hopefully they'll pay some attention to it. Thank you for your consideration.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate that. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Cheryl. I sent you an email, and I'll just reiterate it. I found out recently about this BES initiative, and it, and the forcefulness of the AB 205 shoving it down the throats of local cities, these global corporations coming in to pollute local jurisdictions, just reminded me of what I saw when I lived in South America, when I lived in Brazil. The Ciudad Cubatón was polluted and exploded by petrochemicals. In Ecuador, Chevron polluted their, their Amazon area, and they were fined billions of dollars. They crawled back to the USA to help the US get out of their multi-billion dollar fine. So BES, you made, the staff made a presentation about the, the biotechnology manufacturing zone that you want to produce. What type of deterrent would a BES facility near that zone be for cities that would want to move here? That makes absolutely no sense. The three blue box areas, the blue boxes indicated on your zoning map, your proposed BES ordinance, they're right next to residential areas. It's made me wonder, I mean, who developed this map? Someone that graduated in planning school from the University of Chernobyl? Makes no sense. The benefits program, well, first, someone mentioned that the, the Board of Directors of the CEC were put there by Governor Newsom. Okay, so the benefits program, yeah, right. Someone will start a company, probably some brother-in-law, somebody, somebody related to this, and then they'll claim that they have a benefit. And the companies that will eventually operate these facilities will be a shell company for purposes of limiting their liability, ultimately, when they get sued. The, I did contact the Uni-Pacific Railroad Track just to give them the FYI, and there's many more communications to be had with them, because they have to be notified. And I'm kind of concerned why they haven't been notified so far. So fight the initiative at, with states, with the various cities getting together. Please fight the initiative. Get, get together with various cities. Get together with various cities and put the legal methods in play. And will that have an effect upon BEST companies? Yeah. Well, that's really tough luck. If they want to stomp and, like a two-year-old, complaining that they were not able to exploit the local cities like they do in other countries, I have a response to them. Give them a cookie and a tissue. Tell them to leave the country and go pollute elsewhere. So that's my comment.
Anyone else wishing to speak before I close? Public comment? I see people standing. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public.
Point order, sorry. Mr. Montoya? Mr. Montoya? Sorry, guys. Way offline right here. That's Mr. Montoya, Malakiz Montoya, who recently we named a community center, De Clodus Park. So I just want to say thank you for coming in, sir.
That's all. I had a point you got. Point. That's fine. So the public comment is now closed. Bring it back. What I'd like staff to do is, you're not going to answer everything, but if there's some particulars that you think are important for clarification, whether they were comments and some of your takeaways as you would normally do. I know that, like, one comment was, is there, there should be a liaison. I'm familiar, there probably is, but if you took some notes, we'd like to hear them.
Well, liaison would be me. Been working with.
That's why I wanted to say that.
That's an easy one.
Yes.
I think the other one I'd like to talk about is the claims about our industrial properties. So why don't we consider industrial? So I think that the thing that might be helpful for this discussion is, we're not considering any of them. We're not considering any sites. We're simply providing to the council, this is the result of what the ordinance does. It reveals only three potential sites. The question is not, why are we proposing on those sites? The question would be, why did we decide to eliminate our industrial sites while the county decided to designate it for those? And it really goes back into the coin that Mr. Don Burris has made, which is, all of us are involved in economic development. So when we look at planning from our perspective, the reason why we didn't include our industrial properties is because those are the sites for which we can bring in high manufacturing jobs. Those are the areas where you can bring in buying manufacturing. You don't want to take up those sites with the BEST facility because they help with property taxes, they help with job generating, they help reduce vehicle miles traveled because people can get a job in their own location. So it's part of the reason why we eliminated a lot of those sites, a lot of those commercial areas. We didn't want to put any of those in jeopardy. We're not saying we think we should put the other sites in jeopardy. We're just simply saying the results of the ordinance only finds three potential areas when you factor in all of the other considerations.
And for clarification, two of those three sites are owned by the city, correct?
I've got a lot of questions from city council I'm unable to answer, but it gives us a lot of homework.
That's right. And that's the purpose. This is a study session and the feedback, so you'll be able to carry this forward.
Oh, there was a question about noise. That was something that's in our ordinance that would obligate them to, in a scenario, to produce a noise analysis based off of the size of the project, just like a plume analysis would have to be done. It's based off the size of the project, where it's located. Because we don't know those factors, there would be no point to having a noise analysis. That's something that you would just wait until there's an actual project site being proposed with that one. One last closing comment. For those who are curious about who made the maps, that would be me.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess the only other comment or takeaway, I did hear a comment from the public, from SID, clearly in an EIR. We're in a groundwater sub-basin. The comments coming from El Miura, the implications of everything we've seen in the past, I think, informs the staff and the council, and the desire is, is that would also help inform what you'll take away and even take to the airport land use, I believe, and then also to our planning commission. So I think that the SID is a major factor in this one because of our groundwater basin and ag. Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I want to thank everyone who sent emails. Thank everyone who made phone calls, and, most importantly, everyone that took time out of their day today to be here. It's very important. I think my whole time on council, I think this is probably, I've got more emails about this than anything else, and so I want to thank all of you for taking time out of your day to contribute toward this process. I know Ms. Dunn has been very active in this issue, in unifying folks and making sure people are notified of what's going on. And Ms. Dunn, I just wanted to say, you are an example of the power of one, of what one person can do when they are passionately motivated about something, and I just wanted to thank you for everything that you've done. I know you have a young family, and it takes a considerable amount of time, but I call you. You answer my questions, and you've been just a tremendous resource, but also an inspiration as to like what a community member can do when they're passionate about something. So I just wanted to say thank you to you and for your family for giving you the time to do it because I know that it's a lot on them as well. One of the gentlemen, I don't think he's still here. If he is, I've lost him in the crowd, asked a question about what's the most important thing? It's all of you. It's all of our families. It's each of us. People are not replaceable. So public safety has to be paramount when we make these decisions. And that leads me to like some of the other comments. There were some very spirited comments, and I really liked hearing everybody kind of their point of view on what you think about this. And I think I wrote notes, and I probably wrote it like four or five times, that just because we're afraid of what the state might do doesn't mean that we should condone the decision they're trying to force down our throats. I recognize that that comes with some realistic expectations, right? Local control, like when you lose local control, you lose local accountability. And that being said, I was elected to represent all of you, your priorities, your interests, your safety, all of the above. And I think all of us, I mean, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think in the future, in the past, excuse me, council has been very supportive when the Menard project came here in listening to all of you, hearing your voices, and taking what I would consider an appropriate action for that case. So I'm not going to be bullied, and I could care less what the CEC may or may not do. I have no control over that, but I do have control over what I do in the role that I'm blessed to be in right now, and that's to represent and protect all of you. So that being said, you know, we've had a lot of conversations about different types of technologies. Ms. Dunn made some comments about there being a list of technologies that don't have the same thermal runaway characteristics. I think that's going to be vital in creating an ordinance. And I am supportive of an ordinance, but I will tell you that I will not support an ordinance with any barriers that includes lithium ion or thermal runaway. And, you know, the example with the phone is a good one, but I'm going to give you another one. I was on the Solano County Hazardous Response Team. There are members from every fire department, as well as multiple police municipalities in Solano County that become, that go through six months of training to become hazmat experts in as far as mitigating immediate hazmat stuff. I have since had to remove myself when the Menard project happened from that in order for me to not have any sort of connection to the county COOPA, which regulates some of these hazardous materials and where they go and how we respond, because this is more important. That being said, while I was on that team, there was a thermal runaway experience revolving around lithium-ion batteries in Cordelia, which is a small neighborhood in Fairfield. 500 pounds of lithium-ion batteries, the stuff that you see in like the scooters, the batteries they replace in the scooters, caught fire in someone's garage, and they locked down an entire neighborhood, that whole area, lockdown. All of us breathed it in. The, I don't know what, 300-foot barrier, one-third mile? I mean, you can look at the, there's an orange emergency response guide that we give our first responders. I'm telling you, that smoke goes everywhere. And when they put water on it, it off-gassed even more, and more smoke came out. So, you know, I think we can look at the records. I know they fill out paperwork, but I'm telling you, radios had to be replaced. Before we get to the property that had to be replaced, two first responders went into the house to make sure there weren't people in there because the house is fully engulfed, and did sustain chemical burns and inhalation issues. This is very real. The fears that you have are very real. There is no 300-foot barrier that is going to save you if this catches fire, and that's 500 pounds. I'm just, I'm going to, if you don't know, I'm going to ask Ms. Dunn, but how many pounds are we talking in, I think we've heard utility scale BEST, I've heard 40 kilowatt per hour facility? How many pounds of lithium-ion batteries are there? Significantly more than 500, right? So all I'm saying is, I think it is foolish to think that these imaginary barriers of 300 feet with, I mean, with wind. I mean, when we did that incident, we did plume models, we were looking at weather patterns, we're checking all that stuff. People were hospitalized. It was dangerous. We may not know for years the impact that that's had on the surrounding residents in that neighborhood, or the officers that went in there and were hospitalized for it. But I will tell you, they had to replace, they couldn't decontaminate the radios, they couldn't decontaminate their turnouts, all their equipment had to be replaced, all of their fire engines had to be professionally deconed, and God knows how effective that is because there's a lot of nooks and crannies on automobiles in some of this equipment. So I just want to emphasize that I completely, I live here too. My son was raised here too. I want this community to be safe, and I'm not going to be afraid of what Sacramento may or may not do for me to make a decision about protecting all of you. I think that's foolish, and I'm not going to be bullied, period. So that being said, I'm not going to support any lithium-ion or any type of battery technology. I'm trying to be clear that poses a thermal runaway risk and/or is going to potentially, you know, emit toxins into the air or groundwater when it's extinguished as a result of some sort of incident. I don't think we can allow that, period, like anywhere. I don't care if it's an industrial park or not, because if the wind's blowing hard enough, it's going to blow into somebody's, through somebody's HVAC system. But I want to make sure that we're giving the public realistic expectations. We can make an ordinance, and they have a process to ignore our ordinance. It's very real. Like, so, yes, it can be taken into account, yes, it is a factor, but it might not stop them. So in that aspect, what I want you to know is, you know, elections matter for local issues, for state issues, and beyond. I personally, this is a hill I'm ready to die on because I think that it's corruption at the greatest to allow these things to come in and ignore the safety risks that we know exist. Now, yes, are there ways to mitigate some of these things or lower the chances? Sure, but I'm not willing to take that risk, especially when we know that there are technologies that do not pose those risks. So don't tell me these projects are green, right? Green, when the only thing green about them is the money, and people are more important than money. So I appreciate what staff is doing. I think this is a great study session. I know that you just went off of BEST practices when you did your, when you did your mock ordinance and when you showed the areas that it would incorporate. But I would even argue that if we have safer technologies, there's probably more areas that we could open it up to, right? There are technologies that aren't going to pose these risks that terrify all of us, that are going to catch fire, pollute our groundwater, or give us, you know, cancer. So just keep that in mind. I mean, we heard from this, one of our city attorneys today that there's no voting mechanism to get rid of this. We cannot over, we cannot force the CEC to do something at the ballot box, but you can choose your elected officials, local, state, and beyond. So I would just tell you that when it comes to this, this is one of those where I'm not going to support people that aren't going to protect our community on this issue because I think that there's a lot of money attached to these projects. We've had people offer us $20 million to build pools and all these grandiose, you know, amenities. Nothing is more important than the safety of our people here, and so that's what I'm going to demand that we do, and that's the only way I'm going to vote on this ordinance is if it protects all of you.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Shilla?
Yes, thank you. So just one, I want to take this opportunity just to clarify, staff, whether it be this issue or public works issues, developer impact fee type issues, they're following policies and different advice. That's part of their process. So they collect the data, they come up with what is and what isn't to give us the information, put it out public, and then we dissect it and all try to figure out how to navigate forward. So I appreciate that. I also appreciate in the staff report, they quote legitimate concerns. The community has legitimate concerns. So I think that's important, that the public recognizes that concerns are legitimate, as Councilmember Stockton was communicating. You know, and for me, like, you know, when Menard came up and, you know, other electeds suggested, you know, hey, maybe this is something there, you know, community benefits and whatnot, you know, to me, looking at, okay, you know, our phones, as pointed out, lithium batteries. We have lithium-ion batteries attached to our homes. I understand that there's a difference on a larger scale here, and I also very much understand in the other work that I do about quality control measurements, quality control practices put in place and when those fail, and the impact that it has, not just directly to our safety, but also indirectly to our environment, sorry, how it influences our environment and how the environment in turn impacts our overall well-being. You know, so without going into that detail, I just want to make sure that, you know, staff are doing what, they're looking at things from the confinement of law, policies that are there or not there, and then we have the, you know, the task of how to navigate that. So I appreciate that. That said, one of the things that was asked about, if we put an ordinance to, what does that definition look like? If I understood that correct? Put an ordinance, it has to have some type of definition. Were you guys looking, know feedback on that to a point?
Do you have a definition of battery energy storage systems?
Yeah, or just an ordinance, so why we would put an ordinance in place?
Why would we put an ordinance in place in the event that's?
I'm sorry, and one of those, I'm sorry, one of those, if I understood it correctly, one of the things, one of the things, if the city implements an ordinance, one of the things that you may be looking for tonight is what will be included in the definition of, or defining why that ordinance has been put in place in the first place?
Yeah, yes.
So on that, I think within that definition of why we need to put an ordinance in place, if that's what council decides to do, which is why we're here, is to, is to, number one, ensure our public safety for our people over the exploitative practices of corporate profits. So we have, you know, so we cannot jeopardize the safety of our environment, we cannot jeopardize the safety of our folks for a lot of unknowns that continue to be brought up on these large-scale projects. Along those lines, County Supervisor Mashburn, or Citizen Mashburn, whatever capacity he was, is today, I'm also curious to know, within the ordinance, can we, one of the things we talked about is how to become more energy independent. What if we look at this as a more regional effort? And with that respect, maybe, can that ordinance in itself go to somehow stipulate that we're in, that this, our ordinance is in collaboration or in support of a county ordinance or refers to the county ordinance? So it's not that we are denying energies, BEST, battery energy storage systems within our, it's not that we're rejecting them completely, we're looking at it from a regional perspective rather than a local perspective. And so then maybe by default, we can still mitigate or control what type of systems come in play. One of my concerns that I have about just the concept of energy storage is that you're taking, whatever technology it is, you're taking a lot of energy and putting it into fine, compact space, and energy wants to leave. That's a natural phenomenon of physics. So I think there's safety concerns with everything. And so for me, at this point, with the information that I have presented and even researched, for me to say, okay, these are the systems that we want, I would still want to, there still needs to be a process to validate that, um, there may or may not be, to really understand the, the consequences to that. Because otherwise, you know, sometimes I see it, you know, it can happen all the time. You got good salespeople that come in and say, hey, we got this great new technology and we, oh yeah, this is great, but maybe it's not so much the case. So, um, so the last, the main request is, I guess, to look at, can a ordinance, what does the ordinance look where it's in collaboration with the counties? Thank you.
Councilmember Fremo.
Uh, yeah, be brief. Well, first of all, uh, you know, I've been on the city council now for about a year and, uh, I gotta say, this is, uh, the most united of a city council meeting that I've ever attended since, uh, I started. So, this is kind of nice. You know, it's, it's nice having a room that is unified. I'm, I'm, I too am, uh, it seems like we can't get through a city council meeting almost anymore or, uh, or a planning commission meeting, um, without something that's being affected to us, uh, mandated to us coming down from the, the state of California. And, uh, and this is just another one along the list. So, um, but I just, uh, real brief and I'll stop. But, um, I, I've transported, um, literally, I would say into the hundreds of thousands of pounds of batteries in my career. And I have, uh, done emergency response. We have, we have an emergency response unit. We responded to fires. So, I could just tell you, a little tiny lithium ion battery this big, surrounded in a 55-gallon drum by hundreds of pounds of other metal batteries, caught fire on one of my trucks. Uh, this is, this happened to us. We got it back to the yard. We unloaded it. We found one little tiny battery. Uh, I got a friend up in Sacramento at a TSD up there. It's a transfer store disposal facility. Same thing, one little battery, less than that in another drum. Started to, uh, it started to flare off, uh, built up pressure. They were trying to release the lid. The pressure from that, uh, blew up and hit him in the chin and cut him across the neck. Uh, hospitalized for, for months as a result of, these are just little teeny tiny batteries. And I've, I've hauled, uh, you know, plenty of other batteries that are surrounded in dielectric fluid, you know, for cooling purposes. Uh, I've gone to the lookout towers for CDF. I've worked with Caltrans on some of their substations, hauling these batteries. And I've seen firsthand the damage that they can do. And these, we're, we're talking smaller batteries, you know? So, um, I, I just, I, I, I read through all of these emails that are coming in. You know, after a while, they kind of get, you know, like, you know, especially the ones that they're trying to beat up on us, suggesting that we as a city council are, you know, looking to pad the pockets of the city. And that, that's just not going on, you know? So, uh, anyways, I'm just rambling on. I'm going to stop because it's late. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Chapman.
Thank you. A few things. I want to thank, um, Mitch Mashburn for coming out this evening, board of supervisors, to share, um, the information that the county has been working on in regards to, uh, BES. And then, um, to go along with what council member Dr. Silver has stated in regards to information for the ordinance. I believe I understood him to say that he would like for us to pretty much, um, use the ordinance prepared by the county. The only thing about that is, um, I don't think they, they're very specific about, um, no, I'm not going to say what they're not specific about, but I would like to eliminate lithium ion batteries. And maybe just put, um, I, I really don't know what to substitute it with because, um, I'm hoping that from the list of possible alternatives that have been provided, uh, from people, members of the, uh, community, I know Sarah Dunn had mentioned, uh, 14 or 54, 45, uh, possibilities. But I read up on the iron, iron, iron batteries, I R O N. And, uh, the possibilities there, I think it's, it's relatively new, but it's, uh, showing a lot of promise. So, I'm thinking among that list, there may be some that we can, um, research and say, you know, this may be ideal as an alternative. But I wouldn't, I would like to remove lithium from, I would like, I would not like to have it in the ordinance, period. And then, um, we have heard from many members from the community, many residents, oh my gosh. Uh, we, we received your, your, um, messages, your emails. And I want to thank you very much. And believe it or not, I tried and I might have missed a few, but you all, um, received a reply for me. Because it's very important, uh, to let you know that to hear from you, for you to take the time to pin something to us, the least we can do, or I can do, I'm not going to say we, is to acknowledge receipt of that. And I'm very appreciative. A lot of great ideas were shared, came forth as well. Um, information about studies that have been done. So, again, and then I want to also thank Sarah Dunn. She has been, aside from our staff, uh, who's been working closely with the committee, um, with the county, organized by the county, I believe. Uh, Sarah has represented you well. And with that, she has shared information that she has gained with the council. I read all of the data that was, um, supplied to us. So, you have a very good representative, spokesperson, advocate, looking out for what's best for the residents that are being impacted by this. But really, the entire city will be impacted from any devastation that should occur. Let's see, Mitch candidates. I'm reading my notes here to make sure I'm not omitting anything. Uh, I believe that's all I wanted to add at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Okay, I'll try, I'll try to be short. Stockton, everybody, sorry, my voice is going. He did a great job talking. Going back to our, our Walmart conversation. So, it's a very high-class meeting of minds between the county and representatives of the city of Accahville. And from the day one, I said, I was patiently waiting. We just pulled off in the aisle, talked for half, 15 minutes about how can we protect the county, the city and the residents? We live in the same area. I can walk to Mitch's house. And the comment, I'm not echoing the comments, everything is amazing. But I think none of us here have, have any interest to protect us. There's, I said, there's no benefit. I'm very frustrated with what's going on, batteries and the rules and the regulations. But, um, I wonder, one, one of the three projects had a little excerpt on the feasibility study and how far they could be from the, uh, center and still have, uh, the ability to work. The same thing that arose like a year and a half ago on the council. It's in their best interest to be closer because the power, the power and charge, they, they don't lose a lot of energy. They can go up to, I think, 6.1 miles away and still be effective. So, if they state they can go up to 6.1 miles away, why are we going to let them be any closer? I think if they had the, the nerve to put that in the report, they can be up to 6.1 miles away and still be effective, then we should hold them to that's the closest they should be able to get. And the hard part is, we all have lithium ion in our neighborhoods, Teslas, hybrid cars. So, I think we should be clear to state, no industrial or commercial lithium ion until we have further studies. Because ions already in our communities, in our pockets. Can't, we, we gotta be kind of smart about how we phrase it. Or else they're not going to, they're not going to take it serious. But, I mean, from the day one, I think everyone's counsel is passionate about, there's no benefit. Like, they put these stations here in Vacaville, we get zero benefit. They're not draw, they're not drawing a line. If PG&E cuts the power because of high winds, we don't benefit. There's no switch, there's no switch they can pull to push power to Vacaville to recharge us. The power's going to other parts. We just be, happen to be next to a substation. It sucks for us. It's the, the community benefit that he rose, the 503C. Like, that's, that's a dirty trick. I mean, it just sucks. But we have, we have no benefit. We need to figure this out. And I, I just want to just feel stipulations we can really lean hard on. Make, make them work for it and make it safe. Thank you.
Councilmember Wiley.
Thanks for the information and the comments. I just have two, two other things, you know, the things I mentioned earlier I wanted in the report we talked about. But it is mentioned on one of the papers about decommissioning. And so, I just want to be very clear that the language in the ordinance is very specific. Once the batteries have be, used, reached their useful time, that there's a specific way to correctly, um, remove them and get them out of our area if we end up with one in our area. I'm not advocating for one, but if we do, we need to have that very clear. And also, someone had brought up, if someone starts a project and it fails to complete it, because I think that had come up in one other area, then we need to make sure that they are responsible for removing what they brought in. And when we were talking about Menards a year or two ago, the people that were planning it, they said, oh, this was their first actual one. So, I want to be very clear that if we get, if we are at the point where we have to do something, the people that are coming in are reputable and know what they're doing.
And Councilmember Stockton, do you have another comment?
Just real quick, um, one of the things I forgot to mention was, uh, cybersecurity, uh, on some of this stuff. So, I think that, that should be in there too, but that's kind of self-explanatory. And then, do you need a, like, do you need an official poll of, of the council saying that we don't want lithium ion or battery technologies that pose the same risks as lithium ion? Or do you already have that?
I think it's pretty conclusive.
God, I just want to make it crystal clear for everyone. If there's not anything else I was going to ask, we could take it.
Uh, I haven't even shared my feedback yet.
Your light wasn't lit.
I'm going to try and keep it short. But, uh, before I come, I close this out. I know Councilmember Fremo, you had another comment and then, uh, Councilmember Silla.
Yeah, uh, I, I, I'm just curious. So, you know, the recommendation is, uh, holding a study session, receiving public comment on the draft ordinance for regulating best facilities and if desired, provide direction to staff. I mean, uh, is it even reasonable to hold a study session considering all the information that we have? I guess that's kind of one of the things that I'm asking.
Well, that's what we're doing right now.
No.
I mean, the study session is really intended for the public to provide the feedback as we move into the timeline.
I, I thought there was going to be more of it perhaps, so. All right, that was it. Bad question.
No, it's not a bad question. Uh, Councilmember Silla.
Thank you. So, uh, Councilmember Wiley brought up, uh, some points and I, I think it's important to, uh, so one, there's different ways to, to approach a fight, right? Just in context. So, um, I am curious to know if you, if we have, so, sorry. When you, SOPs, standard operating procedures. So, when I worked in industry, you have SOP say, hey, this is how it's supposed to go. So, that in this case would be our ordinance. But sometimes things don't happen how they're supposed to. Sometimes they work in the SOP, how to remediate things that happened that, that, that happened that shouldn't, or you don't want them to, if you will, in, in the context of this. I'm curious to know if, if staff can look into it, particular legal team, um, to look into, if it's beneficial to incorporate, if in the event, some form, some way, in the event that some project in itself is imposed against the will of the local ordinance, that there are things in there that, that stipulate, um, how to best protect our, our public? And the benefit of what that, what that would establish. Thank you.
All right, uh, just some thoughts from, uh, my feedback. Uh, so much on here is consistent with exactly how I feel. Councilmember Stockton, your, your positions on virtually everything are spot on. To the council, the reflection of the public, absolutely, it resonates. All the emails that came in, there actually was one email that was in support and maybe I was the only one that got it. But at some point, it's not a poll, but you are looking for anything and everything that you can to glean. And I do appreciate the fact that the best way to conduct a study session is to ask questions. Uh, and, and I appreciate the questions asked by the council because I know we don't all think of the same thing. And we hear a question, you go, yep. Process and policy, the ordinance is about process. Uh, the council sets policy and this is the reason why the study session is occurring. And so, thank you for staff and taking the time. And so, when the draft report is there, it's really important to make sure that the details are in it. And overall, um, that, it looks to me like the goal is, as we said, come back with a policy after you study it. And so, we're going through a process so that we have an ordinance. And here's one of the reasons why I think it's important to move forward. And then you'll hear the rest of it. Forward in making sure that our interests are captured in the elements of, you know, how do you do this? What do you study? How would you protect it? Uh, all the way to decommissioning. It's so that also that, while I'm not afraid of the CEC, there was a comment, um, I'm not sure if you're still in the audience, but there was a comment that was spot on. The CEC has to evaluate what potential ordinance or regulation that the local city has. So, to not have a stringent review of what it is that we've studied, it eliminates any objective view that the CEC would have of our city. So, one argument could, could be there was never a study session and we just said, no. Well, if you're the unelected, uh, board of the CEC, it's like, well, the city is silent on it. Well, what we don't want is the city to be silent on it. This is what we want them to hear. And what we want is, is a robust, uh, city ordinance that becomes very clear the, the restrictions so that they can't say, well, they're against anything. And I know for a fact, the organized group and, you know, through Sarah, your leadership, you're not against everything. And that, I think, is invaluable when it comes to a governing body, unelected at the state level, who has been given authority to bypass local control. And so, we want them to have to say, when there is an application, to look at us. And also, from some comments that tonight, we don't need to be afraid of them. And so, what we don't need to do is say, well, 300 feet is average. Appreciate staff's perspective of that's based upon doing the analysis. 300 feet is not where the plume goes. And so, I think I am in total agreement with what I'm hearing on the council. So, the feedback, I think, is consistent. I, I am against, uh, anything within a residential or, uh, within our community looking at the map that has thermal runaway or volatility. I say that also because I met with Assemblymember Wilson one day when we talked about it. Again, this isn't, this is separate than lobbying at the state level and legislative change. But what I appreciated is, is what was coming out of the organization of the community was being directly fed into, uh, Assemblymember Wilson and her staff. And I know she did that also with the senator. And that is simply, you, you mean well in Sacramento. Okay, I'm going to say that loosely. But have you considered the risks? And the takeaway, and that was why my initial ask was, when we do have, um, a, a legislative platform, then associated with a, a firm that lobbies on our behalf, I believe the goal here would be, pay attention to tonight because we're not just waiting to defend against the next piece of legislation that we disagree with. I believe what we're asking for, and I heard it that day and I said it to Assemblymember Wilson, we're asking you to actually sponsor some changes in legislation to protect us. I don't believe we need any form of lithium ion or variant that's, that's volatile anywhere near the residential area. We heard tonight from, you know, the chair of the, of Slone County Board of Supervisors. Obviously, he can speak on behalf of his own involvement. But the reality is, all those are public meetings that you all and we all can pay attention to. If there is nearly 40 sites that are in rural industrial areas, okay. So, to your point, Councilmember Silla, mirroring something along the side, along the lines of what the county is doing is absolutely something I think we've been working together. The City Managers Group and others are collaborating to make sure that we share this information. We do this on a lot of fronts and, and not to mention even this front. So, we're doing it. So, here's, here's some quick, uh, takeaways. And that is, is, uh, we're only talking about grid-scale BESs tonight. We're not talking about other forms of, um, safety battery. I guarantee you, every industry out there has a backup battery because you can't be Alonzo out there and just think that you're going to rely on PG&E. The point is, is we're talking about very large-scale things that we can control under this ordinance. So, uh, five quick things. So, five quick things. We do need to adopt an ordinance. It needs to be stringent. I agree that I don't want to see anything that has to do with lithium ion or a variant that has risk of thermal runaway. Be as broad in the description as possible. But I also think our ordinance needs to have robust or a rigorous comments in there that suggest that there are a variety of technologies out there. And we're not against BESs. And we heard it tonight, I'm not against battery storage. But, but I don't believe that these risky thermal runaway technologies need to be anywhere near an urban environment or suburban environment. So however that gets worded into the ordinance. So disallow that kind of technology. Secondly, we already mentioned that being able to make sure this is in our legislative platform, you know, how we can proactively, not just wait to defend the next thing, but how do we proactively work with our representatives at the state level so that we can actually put some pressure back on the CEC? I think that we would all agree to that. I do agree in the locations, Elmira doesn't need to be swallowed up in any more risk. It just doesn't. And I do see there's two locations that, when you eliminate everything else, one of them is an area that could be developed. Last thing we need is, is an industrial development that's right smack in the middle of the City of Asheville Residential and the City of Elmira, or the Town of Elmira Residential. It just doesn't make sense. That said, I also appreciate it, and I hope the takeaway tonight is, nobody was recommending these three sites. Staff wasn't. It's just that by default, it looked like it was when it's absolutely not. And the truth is, is two of the three locations, the City of Asheville owns, and it's their property. One of them, we've already turned down one because they tried to promote lithium ion. And so, that should give you an indication where this council stands, at least from my perspective. All the rest, I think, goes without saying. I agree, in the commercial industry, people in industry are going to exploit for-profit. And we saw that through the Menard, because at first, they said, oh, no, we're open to technologies. No, they weren't. They were dead set on what they were going to do, and they knew it from the, from the very beginning. And they were just hoping to persuade whether the council, the community, to support it. This council is very astute to this. I don't think you have anything to worry about with that. I just want a really good ordinance that stands for an example. I want ours to be the example, but it works side by side, and it's not in conflict with the county, because the county's trying to offer an opportunity to you, Councilmember Ritchie. You can go six miles out. You can go to places that might be safer based upon wind directions, if you really think you need to do it. But you want to put it right there at PG&E, because it's cheaper for you to do so. Well, we're not interested in cheaper. We're interested in what is, what is good. And so, there are safe technologies, and I've said it all along, back when we did the Menard. There is a real need for storage. It could be debated how much of it. And maybe we have a right location, but wrong technology. And I said that a year, a year ago, when we went into this moratorium. And so, I am against anything that is going to be at, you know, a risk of a runaway. And then, I would also just lastly say, I had a recent discussion with members of SMUD, and I brought the question up. And the reality is, is did you know that SMUD right now is in an agreement for the county of Sacramento to ramp up to 2 gigawatts of battery energy storage that is long duration? So it's LDES. And a lot of these conversations you will get within your communication with Sarah Dunn and the email chain, and that's safe technologies. Some of these technologies are 50 years old. They just haven't been brought to the forefront until now. So why would we want to rush into something that's a risk? And so, a good ordinance won't just arbitrarily say no to everything. There needs to be at least an understanding that if there is the right technology that can be proven safe, a robust policy actually can allow for someone to see that, even though we can see that there's only a couple of sites. But I am not interested in opening up any additional industrial space or growth areas, because we want best and highest use for economic development. Those are my comments, and I appreciate it. And I know that there's further steps to come. Appreciate the audience's participation and all your emails. And I hope for anyone who was not here tonight, to send this two-hour-plus link, and it should answer a lot of people's questions on how this council feels, and it should give clear direction to staff moving into the next phase. So, thank you. We're going to stand in recess and take a break. All right, Backville, we are back. We're going to go ahead and reconvene this meeting, and we will be starting with the, I believe, the business, the first business item that we had passed to our city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a study session on the business license tax modernization. And we have Assistant Finance Director Leslie Hoover and Finance Director Ken Matomea here to present.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we're bringing forward a study session on the city's business license tax structure, which, for the most part, has remained unchanged since the late, the late 1970s, when it was first adopted. So as we look to continue to address our fiscal challenges, this does present us with an opportunity to modernize our business license structure and really tackle more equitability and sustainability with that. So we engaged HGL to study our business license structure and present this evening on modernizing our tax model with three options, and also to speak about their analysis. And tonight, we have Eric Myers, Director of Professional Services with HGL, and I'll pass it on to him. pass it on to him.
Thank you. Good evening. We'll go ahead and get right into it. We're going to talk about three key questions in this study. Where's the city now with its current tax, business license tax revenue structure? How does that place you with relevant peer jurisdictions? And then finally, what, we've taken a look at three options, working with staff, that represent sort of kind of themes for the council to consider when looking at modernizing the tax structure. So the first thing we're going to turn to, where is the city now? I would say, to put it in a phrase, the city's business license tax is stable but low. When you look at the peer jurisdictions, we're going to look at that in a minute. The city is pretty consistently low, both on a per capita and a per business basis in terms of the business tax revenue. Just to put this in a little bit of context, you know, over the last four years, both this region and the state of California have had double-digit growth in the economy. Essentially, that's unreflected in your business license tax revenue structure right now. Next slide. As you can see, the number of businesses is particularly inside, so the green bar or sort of teal color, the lower bar portion of the bar is your inside businesses, those that have a location in the city. That's been pretty stable over the last four years. You've had some growth in the number of outside businesses that are coming in, doing business, registering for a business license here. Next slide. One of the things I'd like you to note is, if you look at the bottom line here, all other rates, there are 22 rates that represent only 305 businesses. That is a lot of administrative complexity. Eighty percent of your businesses are in four rates right now. Contractors, service, your retail wholesale manufacturing, and your professional. And right now, the existing and dated structure has a lot of administrative complexity built in, both for your staff and for the business owners, who've got to find their specific niche instead of being able to have a simple set of business definitions that they might fall into. This just gives you a little bit of a view of the sort of distribution by business type, where the revenue is coming from. This is actually a little bit unusual, and you should be pretty proud of it. There's not usually that much diversity in the cities in terms of the tax base. Usually, it's concentrated in two or three top segments. And at least right now, as reflected here, you've got a fair balance across the different segments of your economy. All right, this is an interesting one as well. On the left, you'll see that the top 100 businesses are 23, roughly 24% of the reported number of employees. That's not unusual. We tend to see a mix like that. Obviously, you know, businesses aren't distributed in an even bell curve. They're typically distributed with high and low ends. What is unusual, and this is a direct result of the cap structure built into your current business license tax, is how little that top 100 contributes to the tax results, which is just a little bit less than 10%, is contributed by the top 100. That's not typical. Typically, what we'll see is that the top 100 is closer to 50, 40 to 50% when we look at these. To give you another view of this, half of all your businesses, so we looked at the median, half of all your businesses pay $75 or less for their business license tax right now, which means that typically about half your businesses are paying the minimums probably, or very close to that. So that's where you are now, stable but not a highly productive in terms of revenue to use for the services to provide to your residents. Jurisdiction comparison, so how do we look compared to some of the peer jurisdictions? This is a very high-level review. We look at a few of the demographics, like population, business count. We take these numbers, they're a little bit dated because we pull them from the state, from the controller, so that we can have access to all the publicly reported data. And you can see that Vacaville, in this comparison group, is the lowest in terms of revenue per capita and revenue per business by a significant amount. I would note, just on the fourth line, Fairfield, excuse me. These, again, are numbers, 24 Fairfield went to ballot measure that passed to modernize their business license tax structure. And their numbers are up approximately another million, so about 2.7 roughly after the passage of that updated business license tax. Slide. Here's just another look at the revenue. This is again based on state-reported revenue a little bit before COVID until a couple years ago. You can see that the general trend, you can see the dip. And that didn't impact the city as much, probably because employment was still a little bit stickier with the way that there was support during COVID. But it's also not been a significant amount of growth. It's sort of flattened out over the growth period post-COVID. You can compare those trends. I will note Richmond in the bottom left, that is not a mistake. They passed a pretty aggressive business license tax based on grocery receipts in 2020. And so they did jump from just under $5 million a year in revenue to close to $16 million a year in revenue. We also took a closer look at Fairfield, Napa, and Vallejo. And what we did was we created these fictional businesses using some of the roughly data in your cities and others. Excuse me. I seem to be losing my voice. I apologize. And none of these numbers are real. We've kind of just used them as representative placeholders for, if you were this kind of firm, right? What would you pay in Vacaville, Fairfield, Napa, and Vallejo to give you a way to compare what the tax rates are and what the estimated revenue is from each of those scenarios? Just as a point of clarification, the column that says number of comparable businesses, that is a column representing roughly the number of that kind of business that's in the city of Vacaville. It doesn't represent how many would be in other cities of that type. And again, you can sort of see that, for the most part, Vacaville is the lowest in terms of the revenue there. This is just some backup. I won't spend a lot of time on it. It's happy to answer questions on it, but essentially, it's a breakdown of, okay, we gave you what the results would be, what would the tax be? How did we calculate it? Here are the rates from each of those cities. Here's how we classified the businesses, so that you have that backup information. All right. Third item, the three themes, the models. One, not one that I necessarily recommend, for reasons I'll talk about in a minute, but I think it's important to level set, which would be if you kept your existing structure and took your CPI adjustment from the 1970s through now, that would be about a 495% increase on your existing rates. What's in favor of this model? Well, it's easy to implement, and it does lead to some increased revenue. And people are familiar with this structure already. It does nothing to increase equity, however. One of the things with a per-employee business structure like the city currently has is there can be some inherent equity issues. Service industries, which tend to be maybe immigrant-owned or smaller businesses, those tend to be impacted more highly when you're basing the tax on the number of employees as opposed to the grocery receipts being earned. The economic realities are that a doctor's office is going to earn more per employee than a hair salon will typically. And a per-employee tax doesn't recognize that in any way, shape, or form. Also, this model does not make the structure simpler. And finally, in terms of modernization, while there are a number of per-employee cities still here in Northern California, it's not really the modern trend, which is more towards the grocery receipts. And part of that has been that what used to look really stable as a per-employee basis, right? Employee doesn't change as much as maybe the grocery receipts does. That's been eroding over time with remote work, with automation, which we, I think, are likely to see more of in the future. The number of employees that businesses are employing to create their products or deliver their services is going down. And so it's not the stable measure that it once was. The next model is a simple percentage increase. It is a grocery receipts-based model. Sorry, excuse me. This would be the revenue that you might see from that 495% increase in the rates. So roughly 2.1 million in estimated new revenue from roughly a 500% increase to adjust for CPI. Next model is a very simple grocery receipts model. It's one grocery receipts rate for all businesses. That makes it quite simple. You use a small minimum fee, $25 for the first $25,000. We don't change any of the exemptions for businesses as they currently exist. They just stay the way that they are, so exempt businesses would remain exempt. And then it gives you greater equity because it's scaled to the size of the business automatically. You're paying based on how much you generate in terms of grocery receipts. It would also generate increased revenue for the city. And it does make it simpler. Everybody knows what they're paying. It's a single rate. The cons, maybe it doesn't really give you the same policy levers as a more distinct, the kind of the third model that we'll get to in a second, that doesn't recognize, for example, the difference between, say, professional services and the rest of your businesses in terms of their productivity. And so it trades off some of that nuance for simplicity. If we look at the results, the forecasted sort of estimate would be about an additional 3.1 million in revenue. That would be at 50 cents per thousand. It's a great number. It would put you a little bit high in your peer jurisdiction at 50 cents per thousand. There are some cities around here that are charging that at certain parts of their rates, but for example Fairfield, their rates come down significantly over $1 million. And so you want to keep that in mind for competitiveness as well. Finally, Model Three is a tiered flat rate by grocery receipts. On this, what we get, well, essentially, the structure is tiered grocery receipts rates for businesses. So we'll step the rates and we'll have two classes of businesses, A and B, which is similar to what you've got now. You've got an A, B, and a C, but we will simplify the rate structure. You'll have a small minimum fee. Again, it keeps the specific categories that are in the current code, so that does help with the transition. And then it reduces some of the administrative complexity, but it does have a little bit because you've got to have process in place for dealing with how much grocery receipts from year to year is being reported at each level of the model. Let's go ahead and go to the results for that. So the estimates here would be, if we have a tier structure, it's got fairly small steps, 50,000 per step roughly at first, and then jumping up to 100,000 per step. The rates are quite competitive if you look compared to, say, Vallejo or Fairfield, you're going to be in the ballpark. One of the things this model does is above $1 million. It does have, you know, you've got a 50 cent or a 25 cent rate. Tax category A would be the professional services essentially. Tax category B would be everybody else. And so you get a little bit of that recognition that you've got more productivity per head count, and professional services tend not to contribute to your tax base in other ways. They're not already collecting and remitting sales tax, for example. Right? So generally speaking, you know, this puts you in a good competitive position with the peer jurisdictions, not out of step, and gives you a more modern structure. The results that we would estimate from something like this would be about an additional 200, sorry, 2.4 million in revenue to the city. Keeps the categories pretty compact and eliminates some of the complexity from the current system. We get rid of, you know, 22 categories that don't really need to be there, and we consolidate even the top four into two main groupings. What we did on this slide is just very briefly take those, the current Vacaville structure, those three themes or kind of models, and then take Fairfield, Napa, and Vallejo as the key comparators. And then we just looked again at these hypothetical businesses. Where would you wind up? In just about every case, Vacaville would not be the highest. You'd be competitive. Sometimes it's with Fairfield, sometimes it's with Vallejo, other times it's with Napa. And you would kind of wind up in that group of competitive rates, so that we're not inviting businesses to relocate, right? But you are being able to have a tax structure that is more modern and helps support the fiscal sustainability goals for the city. And I think with that, I'll turn it back to Ken.
Thanks, Eric. So tonight, as a starting point, what we're looking for this evening from the public and council is really a feedback in direction on one of the preferred models. As far as the dollar amounts, there may be feedback on maybe 50 cents isn't appropriate. We like 40 cents. That's information that when we actually get that feedback, when we get to the next council meeting, we can really delve more into that. But I'd say, more than anything, of the three options presented, what is the structure that council prefers? And with that information, that would allow us to come back a month from now and really dive more deeply with real-life examples of what that structure would look like with our business community. At that meeting, we would be looking for direction on whatever structure is chosen, direction from council to move forward with the education phase with the public and our business community, so that they understand the impacts of what that structure would look like. We anticipate that in that May-June timeframe, we would be coming back to council again, and that would be the time where we'd be asking council to consider putting the tax, the business license tax structure potentially on the November ballot. And so there are future meetings to discuss this this evening. We are really looking more so for feedback and direction on one preferred model. And with that, we'd be happy to take questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Obviously, it's fairly complex. Quick question, and that is, is looking at, in the staff report, Table Three, the comparison of business licenses. There's another column at the end that says cap presence. And so if we're looking at Vallejo or Fairfield, there's an N next to it, and yet with Benicia, there's a Y, so yes. Could you explain what that means? And then, these are grocery receipts. Is there any other city that was looking at or has adopted a tiered model?
Yes, so the column on cap indicates whether there is a cap built into. Is there a maximum? the column on cap indicates whether there is a cap built into, is there a maximum amount that you have to pay in that city? So yeah, Benicia is, I think, is roughly $450, something in that range. Vacaville's got some caps built in right now as well at different ranges. And then in terms of your second question on, on the gross receipts, could you restate that for me to make sure I answer it correctly? Did you get that, Ken?
Yeah.
Yes, I think the second question was related to tiers and if there was other cities that have implemented that. And I think our city manager could speak to this because our neighboring city Fairfield does have something that's more like that Model Three where you see the tiers implemented.
Yeah, so many cities have tiered models along with gross receipts. And the way it works is it makes it more equitable for our smaller businesses because as your gross receipts, gross receipts are growing, then you can have a cap of after a million dollars, we're going to do 50 cents or 16 cents or whatever that number is for 100,000. And that helps, but you really don't want to say a cap because then that will restrict. Like if, if you say your cap is $2,000, then a retail business that's making 16, 20 million dollars, then you won't get the benefit of that tiered model because you have put a cap. And as you can see, the two cities that have cap have the lowest business license tax.
And that was, I wanted the clarification and also to understand cities have done the tiered. Clearly, I think most of us understand tax rates, right? We're in, we're in tiered categories for federal taxes. So it helps to understand what, how that works. I just wanted to, to know more about that. So thank you. Councilmember Silva?
Yes. So the, with, with, I understand that we're looking at increasing the rates. One of the concerns that I've imagined business owners having is just when they wanted to do improvements to their site, their turnaround time and clarity in that. City manager, how would this, how would increase the rates allow us to be more, allow us to be responsive of how they have, business owners may like, business owners may like to be, just to be.
Help me understand the question. So are, are you asking me like the business license tax revenue? Help with the business improvements, like an incentive program or?
If a business wants to improve, they need a permit to, how can we expedite? Would this allow us to expedite or speed up our permitted for rule process?
No, those are two independent things. So we are in parallel working with our community development department on the development process improvement. We're actually planning to meet with the Big Four, the bid, the visit Vacaville and Chamber of Commerce as part of our monthly development strategy meeting to understand what kind of challenges they're facing and what we can do. We have already started the Tenant Improvement Tuesdays and the Plan Check Express on Wednesdays where small business owners can actually come in, bring their application, and they can either walk away with a permit or they can walk away with, here are the next steps to get your permit. So the process improvement is totally independent from the tax structure.
I understand. Thank you for clarifying. I, when we say this is going to increase our, our money to our general fund, if we're asking this population to compensate for that, the, the question's going to be what, what, you know, I would imagine the question is, okay, well, what's the benefit to me? You know, immediately or in, you know, later on? And so obviously, so like, for example, when I see here under tiered flat rate by gross receipts, option three can be administratively complex. Is that to be interpreted that we're going to require, it would require more staff to manage this tax structure?
I don't think so, but Ken can speak a little bit more to that.
No, we don't anticipate, for example, if we were to go with Model Three, that that's going to require more staff. It's just in comparison to Model Two. And so when you look at Model Two, the way that that structure is that up to $25,000 in revenue, everybody's paying that $25. Once you get past that, it doesn't matter what type of business you are, whether you're a salon, a small restaurant, a consulting firm, you're paying 50 cents for every additional $1,000. That's very simple to interpret and understand. When you're looking at Model Three, it factors in kind of if you're making under a million dollars in revenue, there's those different kind of fees. I forgot, we'd have to bring up the slide, but there's a set fixed amount based off if you're like at 100,000 to 200,000, 200,000, 300,000. And the other part of that as well is that we're similar to our current business license model. We have categories. And so those who are in kind of the professional services category, they get taxed a different rate than if you're in our services category. And so that's where it's more administratively complex. And so we just wanted to point that out. It doesn't mean that we need to hire additional staffing for that, just more so if you're comparing kind of the pros and cons of the different models, that, that's why it was put in there.
All right. And just to clarify, because I, I recognize and communicated effectively, but when we generate, you know, however it is that we generate revenue for the city, that is, that allows us to offer better services to respond to the, our council's priorities. One of those priorities is how we best support our small businesses. So would you, would you pretty much agree with that?
Yes, I do. And just to clarify a little bit, so we want to keep the benefit part away from the tax measure. And the reason for that is when you start going into specifics of this measure would fund for this particular program, then it becomes a specific tax measure, and then it requires 66.7% pass rate compared to if you have a general tax measure, it requires 50 plus one. But as a council policy, if the measure passes, we can always come back and council can say, whatever additional $2 million we're generating, we want to set aside 25% of that, which is hypothetically, let's say half a million dollars for a specific small business incentive program. And that could be if the measure passes, then we can have a policy discussion around what kind of incentives we want to include for supporting our small businesses.
Councilmember Ritchie?
So I know we're, we're here, not to give direction, correct? I just want to say I'm supportive of it. The tier structure, as a small business owner myself, I mean, I, I think it's time. The only change we want is no change. And I think if you expect people to actually want to change, you're like, you're the fool in the room. Like, no one's going to want to change, but we need it. Earlier today, I heard a presentation, two of our alamotters, Councilmember Scott Tonason, Kate Patrice from Fairfield, were answering questions regarding like, how does a city, how does a city do this? How does a city help benefit downtown Fairfield? And how does a city help protect downtown Fairfield having people who are homeless sleeping from our restaurants, our businesses? What do you do and help a business? They answered 20 minutes of questions. The business, this is something we need to do. By us investing in ourself, increasing the level of service, the quality of life for the city, the business will prosper by creating more revenue to allow the level of service and quality of life to increase. I mean, my, my business is not something people, they're getting cupcakes and candy, like, but there's a lot of businesses that will actually directly benefit by paying more, they will earn more by increasing the quality of life for the city and downtown business districts and et cetera without Vacaville. Like, we haven't increased in 24 years. Before that, it was like 1987. It's, it's time. Everyone wants more, but no one wants to pay for anything. We want a better quality of life, we don't want to contribute. Like, we need to contribute. Small business will make more by giving, and in return, we'll get better quality of life. So I, I think we, it's time. You know, we, we've got to know we're going to have complaints and whining, but it needs to happen.
Go ahead and open up the public for any comment. I see, now I'll go ahead and bring it back. Look, I'm, I'm in support of the, the Model Three tiered. I realize the, and I appreciate the intent from staff and working, you know, with our consultant to try and understand and give us some comparison. It's important, for me, it's important not to simply say, how can we generate more revenue? The reality is, when you look at a system that was adopted in 1977, and then it was reevaluated in 2000, I don't, it doesn't say how much it changed or if it changed. But, you know, we're a quarter of a century away from even when it was last reviewed. I appreciate having a system in place that doesn't have to be reevaluated every, you know, every year, every three years, every five years. You structure it based on a system that overall economics and inflation and, you know, revenue generation, it, it gives some clarity in different service types. It also separates the two as far as, you know, how you escalate it. And it is true. I, I really do appreciate how you can look at something in a cross comparison and even the hypotheticals. I know it's hard sometimes in hypothetical, but in this case you can, you can simulate it. So, because it's clear, you know, certain types of a warehouse business could be, wow, that's pretty high if it was simply receipts. But in the tiered model, it demonstrates a balance based upon the different groupings. And so I'm in support of, of the Model Three tiered. And I know what you're looking for tonight is to receive this and to, as a council, to give direction as to one of the three as a path to hone into, and then more will come back. And so what we are going to need from the council is to give the direction on one of the three. Obviously, one is, the existing, it doesn't work because for me, we're not going to adopt across the board 495% and then we're in the same place we were before. You know, you wait five, 10 years and you're in the same spot. So, Councilmember Wiley, so you concur with that? Yeah. Councilmember Wiley?
I also am fine with number three or number two. I do have a question. Does everyone pay their business license like one time a year all at the same time? Is that an administrative issue? Or does everyone pay based on when they, you know, pulled their license and got theirs, got started? So, so is it something that's going to be administratively complex throughout the year or just easy to do once?
Yeah, our renewal is in March every year, so it is annually. And so it's not going to change what we do now as far as the administrative complex of that piece.
Okay, so if someone starts their business in July, is it prorated till?
It's prorated at that time, but yeah.
That's fine. And then I just am happy that it's more equitable for the, the people. And then as my understanding is, we haven't gotten input from the businesses yet, but once we select one of these, then the next step of this, we will also get input from the businesses because that's important to hear too. Is that correct?
Yeah, so our next step is we'll, we'll come back and we'll do some specific modeling for you based off of the tiered model with some businesses that we have in town and just kind of say, this would be like the estimated gross receipts. So you would see this change. And so that would be the next step. And then from there, it would be outreach that's going to continue coincide with the sales tax measure and how we get far into that way. So this is going to take us a while to get through this process.
And then the public will vote on it, not just the business owners?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And for clarification, what will come back also is a more robust discussion on what the actual rates would be. This is just for tonight's hypothetical. Correct. Councilmember Fremell?
Yeah, thank you. I'm just curious. One of the things I think would be important input would be from the Chamber of Commerce for here in Vacaville to get some input on what their thoughts are on it. I'm looking at, that's, that's one of the things. I'm also looking at Table Two, comparison of business license tax rates in nearby cities. And I see, it looks like Napa is very friendly to small business. And the bigger, the bigger the businesses, the, the more that they're paying. I mean, Napa's paying, if you add all the categories together in Napa, it comes out to about 35 grand, where Fairfield's about 10, Vallejo's about 12K, and Vacaville's about 2,200. So I'm also curious as to some of the other categories that are not represented in here. So out of all of the businesses that we pulled up, I'd be curious to see how many of those businesses, their home addresses are actually their homes, people that are working from their homes. And because I didn't see any numbers represented in there for small home business. And I know that that's a pretty minimal fee and for good reason. And then also know that there's contractors, a lot of contractors that work out of their homes that have, you know, three, four, six, eight, 10 employees, you know? And I know these small businesses are getting hit from everybody, every federal, state, local, all the other special licenses that are required and workman's compensation and all these other things. So I have a heart for the small businesses here in our community. And I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at a supermarket retailer in Napa, 25K, and we're charging $575. I mean, I don't think the prices over there are that much more in Napa than they are, you know, but I think tomatoes are close and milk is probably close. Maybe it's a little bit more, but I would like to see more of that. And then I'm also wondering about some of the other categories like hospitals, garbage companies. I mean, those are all included into this, and I don't know which categories any of those fit into, you know, like banks and biotech and credit unions that have, you know, a lot of employ, just is there, are there numbers representing these other businesses? I mean, I know it's a big, but I, I'd like to see, I, I, I feel like I need more information.
We can, we can definitely add some more cases to address the, the types of scenarios that you just mentioned. Some of those are going to be exempt, like banks. Those are typically exempt from business license tax under state law. It's preempted, but, but we can add some more of those cases for you. Generally speaking, under Model Three, pretty much every type of business you just mentioned would fall under category B, Class B, which is the smaller, the lower rate type.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Silva?
So I, I understand this is an ongoing process. You're looking for a motion, staff's looking for a motion to accept the presentation and direct staff. So it sounded like there may be a majority that are in favor of pursuing and going through the whole process, get more feedback from the community regarding Model Three, the tiered flat rate by gross receipts. And with, do you guys need direction on no cap today? Or is that already include no cap?
I don't think we needed that. That was just a question. Were you entertaining a motion?
Yeah, that was my motion. That was the motion.
All right, so Vice Mayor seconded, so we have a motion in a second. Any other further discussion? I do, I do agree, and one of the things for clarification is I know as you move forward, like the staff report does indicate in like Table Two, supermarket retailer with 90 employees and 25 million, that the examples be as clear as possible. Because when we look at Table Four, you know, it says grocery retail with gross receipts of, you know, 9.5 million. But on Table Two, we're looking at, you know, 25 million. So it could be misleading. See what I'm saying? Because that's, it makes it look like that it's, you know, the differences in price.
I see.
It's, it's just a slight.
Yeah, we'll make, we'll make sure that the, those input factors stay consistent across the tables.
Especially with your analogies, your illustrations are great. It's just that what we're looking at, at the beginning of this is what we're currently evaluating. And then the hypothetical had a number that's very different. And so the factor looks different, and then we're translating in our head. And as you're working with the strategic stakeholders, the goal here is, is to have something that is considerate for the businesses that are struggling. I wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Fremell. We want to make sure that. But we also want there to be clarity in how they interpret it and not be confused. But overall, appreciate the presentation. So we have a, we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So thank you. All right, Madam City Clerk, what's next?
Our next item is a presentation on the city's new community engagement strategy and communications plan. And our public relations manager, Joanna Leo, and her consultants are here to give the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm excited to be here tonight to share with you a lot of work that we've been doing with our partners tonight. So I'm presenting along with our consultant team with Tripeppy Smith, Director Sydney Overly, and Senior Business Analyst Melody Moore. So as a key deliverable, the city council adopted the 2021, 2026 strategic plan. And that was to promote community engagement and increase equity in inclusion in goal number five. The city council authorized a consultant services agreement with Tripeppy Smith in the fall of last year. And the primary charge was to complete a communications assessment and audit, prepare a five-year community engagement strategy and communications plan, along with an executive summary, staff training, and an implementation support. So over the last year, Tripeppy Smith has engaged with the city, with the community, the city council, key stakeholders within the community, the business community, staff through interviews, surveys, virtual and in-person events, and then internal strategic workshops. The robust assessment produced a comprehensive data-driven plan delivered to staff this fall. And the key outcomes of this effort are And the key outcomes of this effort are a comprehensive community engagement plan with key goals and objectives and internal process improvements, increased public dialogue, and foundational trust has been continuing to be built, and an integrated multilingual communications approach. And with that, I'm going to turn over the presentation to Ms. Overly.
Thank you, Joanna. As part of our initial evaluation, we conducted a community feedback questionnaire in November to gain insights in how the community typically receives information from the city. And 35% of respondents said the city does a good job communicating with the public, just underscoring the opportunity for improvement. And in late 2024 and early 2025, we conducted the communications assessment that Joanna was talking about to evaluate the city's internal and external communication methods, tools, policies, and plans. And this robust audit included a review of all digital platforms as well as 26 interviews with all of City Council, city staff, and community stakeholders identified by staff. Leveraging these insights along with a community survey, the assessment identifies both strengths and areas for improvement. And with that, it's important to have a shared understanding of what we all believe to be effective communications and public engagement. And we guided our recommendations around these themes of proactively planning communications, providing transparency, engaging with the community through feedback loops, and streamlining communication processes across departments. And on the screen, some of these numbers may have changed a bit from our initial audit, but here's a general snapshot of Vacaville's audience size across digital platforms. So this outlines the number of followers or subscribers the city has on each platform. According to Facebook, the city's estimated audience size is about 246,000. And that targets people who either live in Vacaville or recently lived in Vacaville. And notably, the city subscriber list for Alert Solana County is the largest audience for the city, which is great for emergency situations. And it also exceeds the city's actual population, which hovers around 100, 2,500. Overall, these numbers help provide some insight into where the community typically sources digital information from the city, and also where we can start closing the gap as far as increasing reach on our accounts. And we delivered the communications assessment in March and reviewed our findings and recommendations with the public through two community engagement meetings, one virtual town hall and one Spanish-language focus group meeting. And in each of these meetings, participants had the opportunity to share feedback on city communication practices, and their input was taken into consideration for the strategic plan, which Mel will go over.
Thank you, Sydney. As Sydney mentioned, we then dove into the plan process, where we evaluated findings from the communications assessment, community feedback, as well as internal feedback from a whiteboarding session with staff. These insights inform key recommendations that were then organized into a five-year implementation timeline. The focus of the plan is designed to be strategic, to address key communication needs, as well as realistic, to be aligned with current capacity resources. The seven objectives on screen form the backbone of the plan. They focus on strengthening internal coordination and communication, increasing proactive and transparent external communication, expanding partnerships with community organizations and groups, solidifying and evaluating Vacaville's brand identity, diversifying and optimizing communication tools and channels, enhancing the PR division's operational effectiveness, and establishing consistent metrics and evaluating performance regularly. Together, these all aim to define the standard for effective modern communication in Vacaville over the next five years. The first 12 months of the plan focus on easy-to-accomplish actions and high priority initiatives to establish foundational systems. More complex actions and initiatives that require additional resources span following years in the plan. The city has already, is already underway with some actions, including the launch of a regular public newsletter, instituting internal communication meetings, implementation of a digital asset management tool, and the development of brand guidelines and expanding design templates. Additionally, as part of the first 12 months, priorities are to develop an internal communication calendar, implement a community request management system, explore AI tools, including chatbots and automated meeting summaries, enhance social media channels, strengthen ADA and accessibility compliance citywide, improve website content maintenance and consistency, ensure better coordination with partner agencies and community groups, as well as recommendation to hire additional PR division staff, and reinforce brand consistency across departments. Years two and three of the plan focus on expanding communication capacity through broadening communication output and institutionalizing new practices. Key actions are to produce more multi multimedia and short-form video content, implement a translation policy and translation workflows. Would like to note as well that the city has already begun increasing translated content with a deeper focus on multilingual communication models, adopt a statistically valid community survey tool, strengthen department e-alerts, coordinate messaging more consistently with local organizations and community partners, communicate more precisely with next order district-level targeting tools, and build more structured relationships with neighborhood groups and partner organizations. Years four and five are more advanced initiatives that require deeper coordination and long-term development. These actions are to develop a cross-department internal e-newsletter, formulate the city communications request process, create a unified approval structure and standardized workflows, enhance recruitment visibility through stronger brand presence and storytelling, strengthen partnerships with neighborhood associations, and expand in-person outreach and presence at community partner events. As part of this, the city will track key metrics across all communication channels to monitor effectiveness. Metrics will inform ongoing improvements and ensure transparency in results. After five years, the plan will be reassessed to align with updated needs, community expectations, and evolving technology. As you'll see in the plan, in addition to the timeline with objectives and actions, the plan also includes practical elements to help operationalize these communication efforts, including internal workflows and approval processes, flow charts, key audiences, and ready-to-use education and outreach packages that are tailored to specific communication initiative size and scale. The aim of these tools is to support consistency across departments and make the plan fully actionable. And that is what we have for our presentation today.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Question from your experience, because I know a lot of League of Cities, I've seen presentations that you've been part of, and clearly helping us to set up a strategy for communications. City of Vacaville's had communication strategies more informally until it has really elevated the last few years. The, the desire that I see, and maybe you can, you can speak to it from your experience with different cities, is you know, how do you create structure within the organization? Because you've got many different departments, and not everybody is outwardly focused or internally connected. So in, in year one, you're trying to bring together the organization, and especially with the internal communications and a, and a strategy for how do you get the information out? Through, you know, through this type of a strategy, have you seen any challenges that other cities have experienced? And how did you overcome some of those? For example, in, in public safety, a lot of times, there's a lot of quick response information. But imagine the media, or the, I'll say, social media and the public is all over information. And this is the age-old question. It appears that the public knows before the council does. And the thing is, is that's understood, but how can we streamline that? And what have you done in cities to actually help the, you know, the engagement process? Because every department's going to need their own engagement. But then this is act, it's like, it's more work for everyone. So how do you create the process so that each department can actually be nimble for the responses that are normal, but a flow of information that doesn't feel like it's held on to so tightly that we, we're not given information? And I get it, there's also the concerns because of PRAs and who's getting what information. But it's the age-old, age-old problem is, is there's, information is in front of the city always, and how do we be more responsive? I know that you're very much in the, in the world of expertise. I'd just like to hear your perspective on, you know, how do you do that? And can you, can you share what you've actually done, or an example of how to streamline that so that we can be more informed as a council? And I'll just use one example. Many agencies, many cities over time create, we'll call it a, a weekly recap or a monthly review to the public. And those are all great. But how do we become more nimble and responsible to where it's not burdening staff time every day, and then it's another duty? But with the use of AI and the use of technologies that feeds this information, so it becomes very simple, very nimble, but very timely. That's a, I mean, for me, it was always a, a vision to have this. I'm not the expert to make it happen. We trust that you are, but that's, I think, it's a question wrapped up into looking for some direction from you.
Thank you for that, and I appreciate your focus on initially getting internally organized because that's reflected in this plan as well, as far as the first 12 months, 12 months is really focused on getting what we can get done quick and easy. And as we kind of shared earlier, and Joanna can speak to this too, there are some things that came out of the assessment that we're already able to just get done within that same day, just like when that first audit came out. But as far as organizing internally, those are things that need to get done first before we can effectively expand any communications. And that's kind of reflected in why things are broken up in the timeframe that they are. But effectively, as far as like the stress on proactive communication and getting us organized internally and having those meetings and like mapping out what's coming down the pipeline as far as things that you are going to see on the dais and city services that we are providing and not necessarily communicating about very effectively, but being able to kind of centralize those planning meetings with all staff so we're all aware of what's going on. So that way, when anyone calls the city, that we all know who to direct those things to. So really, it starts with the strong foundation internally, and then that then gets reflected externally.
Yeah, thank you. It's, I mean, clearly because the survey shows that there's room to improve, there's always room to do better. And we heard, we saw that in the survey. And so just trying to be very strategic and very intentional in how we get there. And so first is first is the easy wins and getting the internal structure in place. Councilmember Silva?
Yeah, I think, you know, for me, it's extremely important that we have government that in itself is, that establishes the trust and honors the trust that our community has on all their, all their different agencies, departments, and as well as the individuals. And so I'm, I have a couple of questions, but one is in your, from your perspective, it just seems that if things are not put in a, in a, when things are put in a political perspective, it just seems like the attention or people's ability to grasp on that and, and read it or be informed about it is significantly less. And on the other hand, so like, for example, you know, I've seen, you know, our Public Works Department knocked out tremendous amount of roads, slurry seal, and then they went on to celebrate, which is what I highly recommend, you know, think that we should do. And then people were like, you know, you know, there's always negative people and, but you know, they knocked it, you know. And downtown, we put in trash, you know, these trash cans that had multiple purposes, really to control, you know, trash going elsewhere and to keep that confined. People, you know, put that down. And so like, when we have, a lot of times when we, we have these, these successes and put it out there, and just in an informative perspective to say, hey, here, here's how people, here's how people that are committing their careers to improving our lives for all folks are, are doing it. What are, what are you seeing, or what are some effective ways in what we communicate or how we communicate to where, you know, it, it's something is that it's, that it is, maybe it limits some of that negativity. I know it's not 100% proof, but like, how can we do that to where particularly, again, people are being formed? And when, you know, people in our staff are doing whatever they can to do good, don't feel like, you know, they, hopefully they feel appreciated for their efforts.
So one key thing with that is bringing the community along with the very key projects or services that are going on. So a lot of times, the community might feel like that's the first time that they're seeing this kind of update. So it's really important to be able to like, get ahead of that and share updates ongoing and also showcase staff actually out in the field, which I know that we try our best to do. But being able to show those like real community updates and also put a person to a service is always super helpful. But really, that also goes back to some of our proactive planning about like, and being able to inform Joanna of certain things that are going on, to where that way we can actually provide several updates instead of just one reactive one when everything's all said and done.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. And then, you know, we have a sizable Spanish-speaking population. Is there different approaches when you, to approach different cultures, whether it be Spanish-speaking or other, otherwise?
Yes, definitely. And we did do the Spanish focus group to kind of get their input specifically. And I'll let Joanna kind of share some of the feedback that they had.
Yeah, thank you for that. And so as you, I'm sure you saw, we're looking at a translation policy in year two, three, and some of that was being able to build the foundations necessary to implement that, both from developing the policy, working with our kind of primary focus group and other members of the community that want to participate in building that out. And then ensuring that we have the internal capacity to, to really deliver consistently on what that policy will have within it. So you were at the focus group, which was fantastic, so I think it was, it was great to have you be a part of that conversation. Some of the things that came out of the group that I sat and talked with are things that we're looking at as part of like the AI modeling. So as an example, one piece of communication that came out, or a couple of different ones were, they're primarily on Facebook. That's where they're getting a lot of their information. So there was a recommendation to establish a citywide, like Spanish-speaking Facebook page. So it's be specific for our Spanish-speaking community, where we would call all of the city's posts across all the different channels and put it in that specific location. Another, and so that's something that we'll be looking into as we look, move towards adding that staff capacity to do that. Another element that was important that came up was just how individuals within the community communicate with one another. And it was interesting feedback because it wasn't something that I was really kind of privy to, that a lot of times they're doing like voice, voice text messages. So everything is speaking versus typing with the different dialects and the different, even our own staff presenter was sharing a different dialect in some terms. And, but generally, the feedback was that the participants understood what she was saying. There were a couple of words they clarified on. And so with that, as we're looking at how we communicate with this part of the community, it's really important to look into doing text messaging or even doing voice communications so that they're receiving the information in the way that they want to receive it or that they are going to be able to receive it. And the other piece that we really were trying to build out with them is, you know, right now, we don't have a capacity to post everything or do every document multilingual. And so some of the feedback because of the different dialects was if we just use AI, at least we're providing information in a way that they can receive it right now, even if it has different terms or different words. And so we've increased our use of using multilingual social media posts as an example. We don't do everything. So as an example, when I post about the city council meetings coming up, it's not something that we're currently providing multilingual service unless it's requested ahead of time. And so I don't typically do those in a multilingual. We certainly could, but that comes back to building up over the next year, hopefully building up that internal staff capacity to do that. And then that would also be for other social posts. If we're, as an example, a recent project posting about Jepson Parkway, we did several posts about that, and we did do that in multilingual because we had the capacity with consultant support to draft all the press releases in both Spanish and English along with social media posts. So we're really trying to be diligent about what can we do in, in being consistent with specific projects or specific programs, and then also exploring other elements. So in our office, our analyst is working with the different departments to be able to translate forms that are commonly used forms, like our business license for application and stuff. So really looking about, you know, checking things off the list that are going to be the, use the most often with our Spanish-speaking community as we build out the next five years. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, and so, so whatever comes to be, I think one of the concerns I have is like, most of these things are all some form of opt-in. So like out of that, like what are strategies to get an actual worthwhile, sizable population opt-in, whatever, whatever it is? You know, and even like, you know, I mentioned like culture, but even just, you know, or different languages, but that also pertains to just folks that represent different socioeconomic groups, you know, like, anyway. So I, I just curious to see how that, how that translates. Last question. Last question, have, has this been communicated out to those who have participated in the feedback?
So for the Spanish speaking community, yes, we did do, we reached out to them last week to let them know this was coming forward, in addition to kind of just the broad communications through social media, through email, that this project was coming forward or that update was coming forward.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
I'd also just like to add to, part of, an element of the plan is to strengthen partnerships with local organization and community groups. And a good way to build trust in those multicultural and multilingual groups is to partner with key stakeholders in those groups and trusted representatives to then advance key initiatives forward. So it's a multi-dimensional approach.
Vice Mayor Chapman?
Thank you. I have several questions, but they're quick. Watch this. How many individuals participated in your community meetings? On an average, about how many?
For the virtual one, I believe it was 10 to 15. And then, do you want to speak to the Spanish focus group?
I don't remember the specific number. We were definitely between 20 and 30. We split into two separate groups. So we, the presentation was primarily Spanish, fully in Spanish.
But everybody? No, not just for the Spanish group. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, for the, for the focus, for the Spanish speaking focus group, it was 20 to 30. And within that, and I appreciate Ms. Overly sharing the kind of reaching out to different groups. So we did reach out to different groups and tried to get representatives of those groups to come participate in the focus group. So they were essentially representing, we had the youth soccer league as an example. So we had a few representatives from them. And so looking at different, we did a ton of outreach to try to really target specific groups to encourage them to participate. But in total, I would say we, we had maybe up to 40 people that participated in the community meeting and the focus group. And then the community survey that we did, we had about 550 that participated in that. And so the outreach was kind of over, you know, several months for the survey and then going into the, or the questionnaire, and then going into the, the different groups. And then we, of course, because it's very operations based, we did internal outreach within City Hall as well to encourage staff to share their experience. And so there was feedback included as part of that as well.
Okay, so you had, okay, so my next question. For year two, three, on page, I think that's page 12, down at the bottom, you said next door, you're planning on, what did I see? Yeah, utilize the neighborhood groups and next door leads to enhance communications. How do you, how do you propose doing that?
Yes, so on next door, from an agency standpoint, you can reach out to neighborhood leads, which are assigned based on either who first joined or who got past the, I guess, baton as far as we can have direct communication with them. As an agency, we can't see into like any neighborhood communications or anything like that, but we do have the opportunity to message those neighborhood leads specifically. So really, this would be able to help us target specific neighborhoods that are maybe affected by like a traffic or a traffic closure or something like that, where we were really trying to get them involved, or to also serve as partners of like, if you're hearing this feedback, can you please share it with us? So we can then communicate facts about any situation going on. So it really just allows us to have more of like a grassroots reach on next door.
Okay, that's good to know. I didn't, you know, I, I'm on next door and I see all the writings and people wanting to know, but never a reply, and I can't reply to them, so respond to them. It's good to know that you have a way to, well, how would you monitor that? As a matter of fact, how would, how would you be able to, on a regular basis? Would you have an individual, you wouldn't have an individual assigned just to next door?
So to clarify, it's not that we can see into any like neighborhood discussions that you're talking about. It's more so that we have direct communication with the assigned neighborhood lead that next door actually assigns. So it's one person that we can directly communicate information to, aside from the, our own profile that we can post to.
Gotcha.
And I'll just add to that. So yeah, so if we post something and someone comments on it, then of course, we see that engagement. I want to take it one step further and also just call out the neighborhood groups. And so the other part of it is really connecting with our Backville Neighborhood Association groups and utilizing this growing program to connect with champions within their neighborhoods. And so I'm really seeing that as a benefit to really, a different type of communication that perhaps people are not engaged the same way that are kind of traditional members of the community are. So it provides just another opportunity for engagement.
Very good. Okay, and then when Caltrans is shutting down like Cliffside, I was leaving my home one day and the ramp was closed. I had no, I hadn't read that, but yet when there's like the bridge in Rio Vista and, you know, some of the larger closures, I received that information from ST or whoever. Do they communicate that to you? Is the city made aware when Cliffside? No, they just shut it down. That, that's bad. It's, it's really bad. Not only was I turn, having to turn around, but if you're going up, we had to go over into by Esteca and come back through that strip mall. And it was a line of cars. We were going in all different directions and there is no communication. Okay, that's not good. Maybe, maybe Al Merrick, when he attends the meeting, he can make mention, we need better communication.
Well, and I, I, I think the key here is, is what I'm hearing is, is in the future, we're looking for curated content. We're so used to social media. And so as a city, the goal really is, is, you know, how to be responsive to the internal activities and the external events that affect everybody's daily life. And that's the hard part that nobody's mastered yet, right? Because we're on different platforms. And then ultimately, what we want from our city can't necessarily be responsible for all the private enterprises and the schools and the industries that are out there. That's why I started with, it's the, it's the mystery of how to actually do it. I guess everyone believes that government is involved in everything, and we're all at events, and it'd be easy for someone who knows us to say, why don't you know what's going on? This is a very, a city of 100,000 is very complex. But what we have to do in a plan is to identify that which we know that we can communicate to our public so that they feel informed and engaged by what they understand their local government to be. That's, that's what I read through this report and what your plan is. And that, for me, that's my feedback is, is when you, when you hit that on the mark, we know it because people will hear, we'll, we'll hear things different than a gentleman tonight who said, I didn't know anything about it, except I got a call from somebody who's organizing. That's the kind of stuff that I think a robust communications program and platform will sense in the future, these are our policies, these are our expectations, here's what we do as government. At the same time, here's our relationship with others in future of AI. Will sense, hey, that's important. You might want to curate that into your response. More of that kind of activity I think is going to come. And so some of this we don't know yet, but as I read this, the advancement's coming.
I have one other thing. Alert Solano. What is that? It was in your report. Can you?
Yeah, so Alert Solano and Know Your Zone kind of work hand in hand. Alert Solano, in, in the report, it's Everbridge is kind of the platform that Alert Solano uses. Everbridge is the kind of internal facing. Alert Solano is like what we, as a, as the whole county named it. So it's a countywide effort for emergency communications. So if there's a shelter in place issued, we're going to send out that alert through Alert Solano. It also has, I'm going to blank on what it stands for, WIA, which is the wireless access where we can, we as a city can send out wireless alerts within, and target specific geographic areas. And it hits the cell tower and is going to send out that wireless alert to anyone within that region. So as a shelter in place as an example, it would target that specific radius. And then Everbridge, we work, we use that platform in association with Know Your Zone. And so Know Your Zone recently came out, right? So it was previously Zone Haven. We call it within Solano County, Know Your Zone. There's several different counties in the state that use it and probably across the country, really. And so that is going to be specifically identifying your zone. There's no kind of community, community engagement element other than identifying your specific zone. Once you have that zone, if an Alert Solano message goes out, we're going to say VAC dash, you know, 2035 has a shelter in place. And then we'll have a link to that as well. And so that is a full emergency platform countywide. We, of course, as the city maintain our own, but we work with the county office of emergency services to, to maintain it and to, you know, essentially try to grow that population. So if you see me at community events, I'm talking about Know Your Zone because, you know, it's pivotal for people on the emergency communication side to be aware of the, what's available for them to receive those, those communications.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wiley?
Thanks for the information, and it's nice that you're all here tonight saying, we're doing this, we're doing this, we're doing this. But when Tripepe Smith is gone, how many people are helping you, Joanna?
So it's myself and two full-time media production coordinators and a part-time assistant that helps kind of with videos. So it's, it's a small but mighty team.
It's really hard to keep track of all the platforms and everything else. So I just wanted to, you know, bring that out, that you are a small but mighty team in what you're doing. And I really think it's great for the people that are on Facebook and the other Instagram, but how do we get other people on it? So I like the way that you're trying to get the QR code out at any event. You've got, here's this, here's this. And on two occasions, like on my desk was an old, an older postcard that was about Vacaville, and here's a QR code. And I just wanted to see, was it still accurate? And it does come up and say, well, this isn't here, but click here to go to the Vacaville home. So even though that particular code wasn't, it says click here for home. So how often does the QR code for Vacaville change? Or is that just depending on what it's printed on? But please make sure it keeps going to home.
So we, I think in the last year, year and a half, we actually are, we have a dedicated QR code generator so that we're maintaining QR codes. We have both static codes and then dynamic codes. The dynamic codes allow us to change the URL. We, of course, are limited on the number of those. The, I think some of the website, the ones that specifically go to the city's website, some of those got broken with the website update that we did earlier this year. We did our best to maintain those long URLs. Some of its kind of internal policy and operations and working with the departments to, to ensure they know we have this platform, what's available. And then we can use friendly URLs. So using tonight as an example, cityvacaville.gov/bests is a, is a friendly URL we use. So then we'll use that to essentially create our own kind of dynamic QR code where we can change the friendly URL redirect. But the goal is that, you know, that they will work for a long time, especially the ones that specifically go to a popular talk of the town, you know, program or project within the city.
All right. And then the last thing I want to say is, you know, it's all great to have everything online and all these different platforms, but old school, I like seeing the sign at Nelson Park or at Ala Piatz saying, you know, Merry Men on Main. Well, now Merry Men on Main is down, but it says the Polar Plunge. So I think that just really reinforces Parks and Recs are up, doing a lot of things, and there's activities in the city. So I would say, don't discard good old billboards saying these things are coming up in the city. That's what I like.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open up this to the public, and I already see that there is none. So I'll bring it back to the council. This is, this, clearly there's work in front of you. The, the direction tonight was to receive the presentation. I don't, I don't hear anything specific to change the direction you're going, but hopefully these comments kind of help guide you where you're going. So thank you. All right, Madam City Clerk, we'll move on. And then we're getting close to an hour where we're going to have to figure out, are we going to be okay to continue? So.
At 10:30, you can make that decision.
Well, I know, it's, this, this one went longer than I thought, so yes.
It's only two items?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I just want to check in with the council, make sure that we're going to be okay to, to find, do the two final items. Okay. All right, let's go ahead and move on.
Okay, so this is resolutions to approve the negotiated terms of successor memorandum of understanding with the Vacaville Police Managers Association and other items necessary to implement the MOU.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm super excited to bring the last of our collective bargaining agreements to you tonight. So we will have agreements in place for the next two years. Tonight's agreement is with the Vacaville Police Managers Association. Their MOU expired on 10/31/25. A little bit of, about the process that we go through, which this will sound similar to what I gave you a couple of weeks ago with the rest of the groups. It is a data-driven process where we use comparable agencies, CPI, recruitment and retention data to bring data to the council, and then we receive proposals from the bargaining units. And of course, we always take the city budget into account, which currently we're deficit spending. The negotiating team then receives direction from the council, and then we meet with the groups until we reach a total tentative agreement. The terms and conditions of the PMA agreement are very similar to the terms and conditions you approved a few weeks ago. It is a two-year term. It does have a cost of living adjustment effective, the pay period that includes November 23rd, 2025 of 2%. That is the pay period we're currently in. And there is a one-time lump sum, non-pensionable $1,000 per employee. Another 2% COLA is effective November 1st of 2026. There's an increase to administrative leave to 13 days per year, an increase to a leadership program from 5 and 10% to 7 and 12 at levels one and two respectively, and an increase in tuition reimbursement and student loan repayment to $2,200 a year. We're adding in, adding back in the healthcare double coverage opt-out of $250 a month. And sick leave can be used for California Family Rights Act, CFRA baby bonding. As usual, we do have some cleanup in the MOUs where we make corrections to spelling or grammar, clarify language or correct titles. We also need to approve the pay schedule again tonight. As for the government code listed here, it needs to be approved at a public meeting. It is attached to your packet. Strategic Plan Focus on Goals Four and Four C. Our fiscal impact is about $132,600 in the current fiscal year and 504 over the term. This is all general fund due to the classifications all being within the police department. All these costs include, include our roll-up costs to reflect increase in pension costs. And recommendation is by simple motion to adopt the subject resolution. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I don't see any questions. This is time I would open up to the public for comment. And seeing no one in the public, I'll bring it back to the council. Councilmember Ritchie? Motion and Councilmember Stockton second, all in favor?
Aye.
Moes? Thank you very much. All right, our last item.
It shouldn't take too long, and we have three projects. Well, that depends on the questions you ask. I can't predict that. But there are three projects that are waiting on this item to be processed tonight.
All right, we'll go ahead and continue with this item.
So this is a resolution adopting the 2025 goals and policies for community facilities districts and 2025 goals and policies for fiscal impact analysis. And Community Development Director Erin Morris, Finance Director Ken Motzamia, and Associate Planner Demir Powell are here to present.
Good evening, Mayor Carley, members of the council and all those in attendance. For some quick background on this item, the Melrose Act authorizes the city to establish CFDs to fund city infrastructure services with a special tax on property. In 2007, municipalities were required to adopt goals and policies for CFDs, and Vacaville adopted theirs in 2008. On June 10th, the city council held a study session regarding CFD and FIA best practices, FIA for fiscal impact analyses, which was conducted in 2025 by a consulting firm. Staff directed, was directed to update goals and policies for CFDs and FIs accordingly. Staff directed, was directed to update goals and policies for CFDs and FIA accordingly. And here is a map of existing CFDs in Vacaville for reference. As for the timeline of this initiative, staff began drafting updates for CFD goals and policies and the new FIA policy document in summer 2025. Outreach was conducted throughout September and October to get feedback from the development community. A study session was conducted with the city council on October 28th to review the drafts where staff received comments from the council regarding the CFD requirements for infill development and affordable housing, among some other items. So as for the revisions, the draft goals and policies for CFDs and FIA's were revised based on feedback from the council. There was discussion about possibly exempting infill and multifamily projects with around 80 units from being required to join a CFD or submit an FIA. To ensure this number reflected current development trends, staff conducted an assessment of recent multifamily development within urbanized areas of the city. And the average number of units produced by these projects was higher, so we increased the exemption for up to 100 units. For reference, the previous exemption for up to 35 units was based on a similar assessment of our housing element sites inventory, but this revision took a broader approach with the citywide development trends. Lastly, we did modify language for the affordable housing exemption for clarity and to ensure the units remain affordable for a longer period of time. And the action of consideration for this item is to adopt the 2025 Goals and Policies for Community Facilities Districts and the 2025 Goals and Policies for Fiscal Impact Analysis. And the recommendation is by simple motion, adopt the subject resolution.
And thank you for the presentation. Given that, to our city manager, that there's several projects that are in front of this, help us understand what the next steps are because this is not about determining costs associated to a CFD. This is about policy.
Yes. So I will have our Community Development Director Erin explain it a little bit.
These, the adoption of these resolutions will affect at least four projects in a variety of manners. So for one project that's currently renegotiating their development agreement to come back to council, they're hoping that, that the council will adopt the fiscal impact analysis methodology because they want to apply that and recalculate the CFD requirements for their subdivision as part of making that development feasible. Another development, which is in entitlement phase right now, essentially wants the same thing. They want to be able to use the new methodology to calculate their impacts on city services.
The FIA.
Yes. And then we have two projects. One's speculative because they're talking about building another downtown housing project. They're looking to understand what it's going to take to build in downtown Vacaville. And the, the idea of an exemption for downtown is thrilling to them as part of their feasibility study. And then there's at least one more project. Oh, we have a multifamily project that's under 100 units where they feel that not being required to do a CFD is the thing that would push them into feasibility. There's still some other issues with that one we're working through, but that's a big one that they're, they're enthusiastically waiting for.
Yeah, thank you. I don't see any other questions initially. I'm going to open up to the public, knowing that there's no one here to make a comment. I'll bring it back to the council. Councilmember Fremell.
Yes. For the exemptions under the previous draft and also for the revised draft, I'm wondering where have we considered any of these exemptions for properties that are built out to accommodate the, what we're calling the workforce middle? Which is what, that's like the 1,600 square feet and below, you know, like, like say if it was like Park Downtown, that type of a building, is there any accommodations in there for those kind of considerations?
700 Park, it would already, would be exempt from CFDs for services based on the draft policy because we have drafted an exclusion for downtown projects to try to help promote those. As far as the other question, the fiscal impact analysis does take into account fundamentally as one of the inputs, the future sales prices of the homes. So smaller homes sell for less. So that would actually affect the fiscal impact analysis differently than how we do it now. But at this point, with this update, based on previous council study sessions and direction, we are not introducing exemptions just for missing middle housing. And I would just share with the council that we're still working to find what that is for Vacaville as part of the East of Leisure Town project. So that's something that's still a bit of a work in progress.
So. But I mean, that's, that's one of the components that we're missing here most severely. I mean, along with low-income housing, right, or affordable housing. So I, I would just like to see some more consideration, just what that could look like. I mean, I think it's worth taking a look at what that could look like because if we're going to be attracting businesses to town and manufacturing jobs and then we need some affordable middle-of-the-road type of establishments built so that people can cut a piece of the American pie out.
To our city manager.
Yes. So to respond to your question, Councilmember Fremell, we have been working with developers to explain the new policy will allow them to do the fiscal impact analysis based on their sales price and their score footage. So the smaller the home it is, the lower the CFD would be compared to. So if a subdivision has a 1,200 or a 1,600 square foot home and they also have a 4,000 square foot home, then the 4,000 square foot would pay more CFD compared to the smaller home. But we don't have that data yet, so we need the policy to be adopted so we can start working with developers on that impact analysis. And then depending on the discussions, we may have to come back and maybe do a revision to the policy or we may be like, okay, this is working for everyone. And then we just move forward and continue with the policy that would be adopted tonight. But this is not end-all. This is for us to give us a starting point on because our current policy is not working for development community and our partners as well as it does not give those exemptions for affordable housing and our thresholds are really low for 35 units. So it gets us a step further. And then we can evaluate it maybe another year or so after working with few development partners and say, do we really need to change it or it is working for everyone?
Yeah. I know that we would have to put, you know, conditions on, on a project like that as far as for, it's almost like, you know, when we're helping somebody into a really affordable house to buy it and they have to stay at a fixed price. And I'm, I'm talking about what is the, what is the nonprofit that builds houses?
Habitat for Humanity.
Habitat for Humanity, you know, the type of, and, but I'm, I'm thinking more along the exemptions that could really help the people that are going to struggle the hardest to get into a home of their own. How we can help them and not just looking out for, you know, a multifamily exempt, you know, that are going to put a strain on our system. They're going to, you know, they're going to escape some of those, you know, requirements for, and still put a burden onto our system. So I'm just, you know, there's been a lot of talk about the workforce middle and that that's missing. So I, I appreciate your.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stockton.
Yes, I just want to thank you because you took into account everything we asked for as well as what's many of the developers asked for, at least at that time, until maybe some of them changed their mind. You never know. But I, I actually really like that you've made it, I think, more flexible for the infill development and multifamily. I think we're going to see some of these projects that never would have been built in areas that are just been vacant forever, waiting for a project that is affordable or that it, that makes sense, that could add and benefit an existing community. So I, I really like what you've put together. I think that this slide right here going from 35 to 100, just in today's, in today's, you know, with construction costs and just what it, what it takes to make a project happen. I think, I think you nailed it. So.
Councilmember Ritchie.
I go, I was talking to his comments, but the 100 units is great. Infill is a lot of work to happen. Definitely want to cop on what Councilman Fremell's saying. I'm supportive of this. I think this is what the developers are asking. And there goes, it's like famous song of the Rolling Stones. I'm always going to that, but it's, it allows, it allows someone to go into development where you're, you have somebody that's a 3,000 square foot home paying the same fee as a 4,000 square foot home. That's nuts. This, this finally gives an equitable situation where they can build a house that's affordable and have a like-kind CFD attached to the home. It's not going to hamstring them and reducing their DTI to afford those programs that would give the homes. I'm, I think it's a great step forward.
Councilmember Wiley.
I appreciate the changes here on this, but I'm worried if these are exempted. So on the page three of the report, it says each time public facilities are to be built or accepted by the city, if a community district is formed or you have to have a maintenance requirement, the city will require the creation of a maintenance district, a service district or a home property owner association suitable to provide the needs. So I don't want to say we're exempting this from CFDs, but we're hitting everybody with HOA and then they're going to be paying the HOA fees, which people don't like either. So I want to be clear that I am not in favor of collecting it differently through HOA because that's one thing that Vacaville doesn't have, many HOAs. But when I hear people come here, why are you here? Well, because everywhere else I was looking in Fairfield or other places, they had high HOAs and we haven't had those typically. And so I know that the lighting landscaping district doesn't work for, because we're not getting the old people, you know, the old, the established neighborhoods. But I think we need to have some sort of a thing that gets it in a different way than an HOA. And it seemed like the lighting landscaping is what we have set up kind of now. So that's just what I want to voice.
And for clarification, I don't know if you can just speak to that because HOAs in some cases are responsible for, you know, landscape and lighting or they have their own landscape. Can you further expand on what Councilmember Wiley was, was saying?
There are many developments.
So there's clarification.
There are many developments in Vacaville where homeowners are paying for a CFD and they're paying for a landscaping, lighting, maintenance district. There are very few to no developments in Vacaville where HOAs have been employed. So that's just not something that we've had a lot of in Vacaville, although we're hearing that as a possible tool for maintaining very special facilities like private swimming pools and that kind of thing as part of our East of Leisure Town effort. But I guess what I, what I was hearing Councilmember Wiley say is you're not looking for staff to figure out a different way to cover the costs of police and fire services by imposing it in a different manner. And I would just say that's not staff's intent at all. But I do want to clarify that we have, one of the projects I mentioned, they, with this policy adoption, would not be required to fund a CFD for public services, police and fire, but they would be required to join a lighting and landscape maintenance district for the maintenance of those public streetlights and whatnot. So that tool won't go away, but there's not any intent by staff to try to find another way to pay for police and fire services by tacking something else on.
Vice Mayor Chapman.
My comment is very short and is to commend Erin and all of your, and your staff, everyone, all of you. Even I think some other departments were included in the process. And it wasn't, it hasn't, it wasn't that easy. It was very complex and very challenging. And I just want to express my appreciation for you hanging in there and getting this before us this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Silla.
Yeah. Appreciate all the effort into it. Like to see this move along. So a motion to approve.
Motion is accepted. Second, all in favor? Aye, opposed. Thank you very much. It's 11:17. Good night, Vacaville.